Aloha, Pukaha Nakako. The October 23rd, 2024 Neighborhood Board Meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapale Honakai Haleh Community Forum. My name is Anthony McConaughey Paris and I serve as your board chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting and have community members mostly online via WebEx and some in person Kapala Mahale. For order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand or actual hand and wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before speaking. Introduce yourself and only address your comments to the chair. If I miss any ones in person or online, please get the attention of our Neighborhood Board Assistant, Mr. Siris Hayashi. Speakers have three minutes to comment on any item. And those giving reports this evening as presentations may take up to 10 minutes. The presentation materials have been provided and distributed online in our Google Drive. Please remember to silence any electronic devices and keep yourself muted when not talking on WebEx. So also can we do that for the Kapahala Mahale Live if possible? Because we definitely hear the rustling that's coming from you all on that end for this. So if we can get that muted, that'll be great.
Okay.
Okay, please remember again to stay tuned in for the record before sharing your comment, question, or testimony. This is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate agenda items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. Let's honor each other by keeping to the allotted time for speaking and let's collectively finish our forum in a timely manner. Are there any questions with our standard protocols and procedures at this time? Now, one additional procedure that we'll go over is that we have recently given updated guidance on how to be in compliance of the Neighborhood Board with the Sunshine Law. And I will brief. The most largest change that we will need to get used to until we get further guidance is that board members, as their function as board members, may not, again, may not ask questions, may not discuss, unless the item has been agendized and there is a call for public testimony. And it's of sufficient detail. So what does this mean practically for us? It means that when I call for questions and comments, board members, that's for the public at large when we're doing the presentations that are from the city agencies or from the state agencies or from the electeds. Now, board members may engage with questions and answers and have discussions around the agendized presentations in that section. So are we all clear? Board members may not, again, may not ask questions or discuss on any third-party presentation on the agenda outside what has been agendized. And don't worry, this is new guidance, so if we muck it up a little bit, I'm pretty sure we'll be forgiven as long as we're trying our best to comply with our state's sunshine law. Okay. Seeing no questions at this time from board members or the public in general, I will ask our trustee neighborhood assistant to call the roll.
Are you beginning to roll Bosler? I see member Bosler is online. Dudley.
Start here.
Absent Khan. I see Khan is online.
Here. Present.
Ahale, absent. Liz Stone.
Eo.
Paris.
Eo.
Singleton.
Here.
Pa'ala. Absent Chair, Chair, we have four.
Thank you very much. Now let's go to our city monthly reports. Again, for this section, board members are not allowed to ask questions or discuss items, but we are receiving information from the agencies listed. If there are questions from board members, please write them down in the chat or get them to me as we can then forward them to the appropriate contact for them to present at the next meeting. Okay, let's go to Honolulu Fire Department.
Hi, Captain Ting, representing the Makakilo Kapale and Honakai Haleh Neighborhood Board. Our stats last month for September, under fires, we had zero structure fires, two, five brush fires, six nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, and 14 activated alarms with no fire. Under regular emergencies, we had 147 medicals, three motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, 13 motor vehicle collisions, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and six hazardous materials incidents calls. The fire safety message for the month, smoke alarms make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in their home. For more information and resources, visit fpw.org. They go over installing smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside in each separate sleeping area like a hallway, and on each level of the home. Test your smoke alarm at least once a month by pushing the test button and replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or stop responding when tested. That's it.
Okay. Mahalo, thank you very much from Honolulu Fire Department. At this time, are there any public members, not the board, that have questions, comments, or concerns of what was reported? Seeing no hands at this time, mahalanoi loa for the report. And again, board members, if there's any questions, comments, or concerns on the what was reported, please send them to me or to our Neighborhood Board Assistant or put it in chat so that we can document it for communication after the meeting. Oh, let's go to Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Chair, board members, members of the community. Corporal Pagan with the Honolulu Police Department District Gate Community PC Team. I have your stats for October, well, actually for September. In September, we had 38 motor vehicle thefts, 10 in our area, 14 burglaries, five in our area, 134 thefts, 42 in our area, 35 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, 12 in our area. It's a total of 6,289 calls for service, 1,989 in our area. The only other thing I did want to report is as of right now, I believe we have, you know, the Hono is located by the Musubi Lot behind Kapale Haleh. They've been there since the beginning of October this month. To date, there have been 84 participants currently, 30 are enrolled, 24 emergency shelter, five have been renewed with family, and one is actually in treatment. So we're happy to report those numbers. Seems like they're keeping busy and stuff like that. Chair, if I could, just a question about the comments and questions thing, does that? I mean, to be honest, for us, it's a lot easier if people have questions and we can answer them now because it takes less time for us to have to research it later and when it comes out from everyone else. But I guess we have our rules, but I'm open for any comments, concerns, or questions.
So yes, Corporal Pagan, thank you, Pagan, thank you very much for the report. So we can field comments, questions, or concerns from the public regarding the report. And the board members will have to funnel it through myself and then we can get it through to you afterwards and then you can deal with it then. For the future, this raises a good point. If there are things that you believe that should be highlighted from your report for the board members to actually ask questions or discuss, then just gotta give us a heads-up seven days prior so we can put it on the agenda. If you wanted us to like discuss the Hono situation and ask you questions about that, we just need to put that into the agenda so that we are A-OK with the YP guidance.
Understandable, thank you.
Little bit more work for everybody. We gotta do them seven days in advance as opposed to the night of, but we will try to make this work.
Thank you.
So any questions, comments, or concerns from the general public at this time? Very non-mahalanoi loa, I appreciate it and appreciate HPD's support of the Hono program in helping our unsheltered community members.
Thank you.
Great, now let's invite up Board of Water Supply. I'm not seeing water supply at the time, so we'll circle back to them if they come back later. So let's now go to Deputy Director Keitz Suzuki on behalf of Mayor Rick LaJourney.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, board members. Keitz Suzuki, Deputy Director for the Department of Land Management. Let's see, a few announcements. The city's Department of Environmental Services plans to increase sewer service charges for all residential and commercial customers in the fiscal year 2026, which begins July 1st, 2025. ENV wishes to present information at all upcoming Neighborhood Board meetings on the reasons for the increase, the amount of the increase, and the additional, how the additional revenues will be used. We are asking board chairs to contact Roger Babcock or Mike O'Keefe to set up a board presentation and to ask questions. The other announcement that I wanted to make sure that everyone knew about is that the Neighborhood Commission's Neighborhood Plan Committee began meeting to conduct a comprehensive review of the neighborhood plan. A presentation with more information is available in your board's Google Drive. The committee currently meets on the third Monday of every month at 6:00 PM. If you have any questions, please contact the Neighborhood Commission Office. With that, then with respect to the skyline ridership in the month of September, actually quite an increase, 103,735 riders in the month of September. Then I will now turn to my homework. And I am happy and proud to say that after a number of correspondence and discussions with Director Laura Thielan of the Department of Parks and Recreation of the city and her staff, I have a report to make with respect to the questions about the 400 acres that were transferred from the Navy to the Department of Parks and Recreation. And I think it's a pretty good response. I worked on it with Director Thielan and her staff. And so let me give it to you. I'm sorry, it's a little bit long, but after you've waited so long, I think you deserve to hear the whole report. The Navy's deed transferring, oh, and by the way, just, I'm not gonna read the entire inquiry, but the general concept of the inquiry that was made to the board for the last few months dealt with, how much did the city do in the way of due diligence? How much did the Navy tell? What, who's responsible for any environmental or ordinance issues that may be found on the land hereafter? And so the response of the Department of Parks and Recreation is as follows. The Navy's deed transferring the 400 acres disclosed a number of challenges such as hazardous substances, but did not indicate there were any sites with potential unexploded ordinances. The Navy proposed specific environmental mitigation for the properties which the state's Department of Health has approved and deemed suitable for recreational uses. The Navy is doing a similar investigation and proposal for the new regulated containment PFAS and the city and state Department of Health will have reviewing and approval authority. The transfer deed includes a notice of hazardous substances that have been stored, disposed of, or released on certain portions of the property, including the approximate dates that the storage releases or disposal took place. As stated above, the transfer deed includes a notice of hazardous substances that have been stored, disposed of, or released on certain portions of the property, including the appropriate dates that the storage releases and disposals took place. Additionally, a finding of suitability to transfer, FOST, policy at the Department of Defense uses to determine if a property is suitable for transfer after it has been selected for realignment or closure. The FOAST includes the Navy's mitigation plan for the parcels. An addendum to the FOAST that was submitted to the state Department of Health relating to the PFAS and is awaiting their approval. The transfer deed states that all remedial action necessary to protect human health and the environment with respect to any hazardous substance identified remaining on the property was taken before the date of transfer and that any additional remedial action found to be necessary after the date of the deed shall be conducted by the United States. The department foresees embarking on an extensive master plan and feasibility study to determine what recreational uses are best suited for the various properties within the next year. That's the response from the Department of Parks and Recreation. There was a second inquiry that related to the Kapale City Lights. A resident asked for the city to livestream the Kapale City Lights opening night on Saturday, November 30th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The parade starts at 6:00 PM. Is that possible? The response from DPR is, "Thank you very much for your suggestion. Olelo Community Media has agreed to livestream the Kapale City Lights Parade. DPR is working with Olelo to arrange logistics and will make a public announcement once details are solidified." The third inquiry related to the, some safety concerns, and it was directed to HPD. The residents and board requested HPD police presence at Kapale Regional Park during park hours and requested an investigation of recent criminal activity at Kapale Regional Park. A resident submitted a Honolulu 311 report regarding this matter. Residents shared concerns about the homeless situation at Kapale Regional Park and said, she submitted a report on Honolulu 311. During the school day, students used the park for physical education classes and there were two separate incidents. A woman threw a glass bottle towards the students and a different woman waved the knife at the children. The response from HPD is, "When not responding to 911 calls or tending to any related matters, District 8 Evo Kapale YNI officers will make periodic checks of the area of the Kapale Regional Park and show presence. If feeling unsafe, park users are encouraged to call 9111 to report suspicious or illegal activity and an officer will dispatch to assess the situation. Checks are made of Honolulu 311 and our reports and our records, and they were, and we were unable to locate an incident report. Additional information such as date, time, or police report number is needed to look into the matter. Officers conduct daily checks of our city parks and beaches for violations. Homeless individuals are offered outreach assistance. The Department of Facility Maintenance has scheduled a stored property ordinance enforcement operation, sorry, it's already passed, October 16th, 2024. In addition, the homeless outreach navigation for the Unsheltered Project will be operated out of Kapale to offer additional services and assistance to individuals in the area of Kapale Regional Park." The last inquiry that was made related to the enforcement of parked vehicles with expired registrations and people living in vehicles. A residence and neighborhood, neighborhood security watch member reported abandoned vehicles, parked vehicles with expired registrations, and people living in vehicles in the villages of Kapale area. What can HPD do to address these illegally parked vehicles? HPD's response is as follows. The public can report abandoned vehicles to the Department of Consumer Services online, and there's a website. They can also call 911 to report any vehicles with expired tags. Sorry, I've been talking so long, my computer went out. They can also call 911 to report any vehicles with expired tags, parking, or traffic hazards and suspicious circumstances and an officer would be dispatched to address the issues. Residents are also to work with a community policing team and identify problem areas and streets. We can then work with our personnel to proactively address these violations and monitor the areas. That's my report and my responses to the questions that were asked last time. I stand available to answer any concerns, thank you.
Mahalo, thank you Deputy Director Suzuki for your thorough report. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the general public regarding the report or anything for the office of the mayor? Very none, good job. And if you get any homework, I will forward it to you from the fellow board members to consider for the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now let's go to see if a council member, Andrea Tapola, is with us or a representative.
Hi, Chair, I'm here online, how are you?
Pretty good, thank you.
Okay, so I just have three things that I wanted to go over. You know, I think Keith for giving such a thorough report from the mayor's office. I will say that me and Representative Garcia are actually working on a solution to kind of build similarly to what Waikiki did with the Waikiki Business Association. We want to do that for Kapale because the reason why they have extra janitors, why they have extra security, why they have extra case managers for homeless is because they have actually worked with the businesses to have their own funding source for that. So if you guys are interested in that, which I think we should all be, because honestly, like the services from the city in those areas have been lacking and it's not because no one's trying to do their job, we're just always understaffed. And I think that what they have done in Waikiki is a good model for us to follow. Please contact myself or Diamond Garcia about that. Secondly, I wanted to share that this Saturday, we are having a Priced into Paradise event. I'm hosting that at the Blaze Dell from 9:00 to 3:00, it's free with registration. I'll be sharing our resources for home buying as well as renovations and real estate investing. There will be government agencies there from the state, DHHL will be there, OHA will be there, some cool land title for Hawaiians that want to come out. But we also will have other resources, nonprofits, for-profits. Again, the Blaze Dell this Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00. Lastly, I wanted to share that tomorrow during the Public Infrastructure, Technology, and Safety Committee, which I am the chair of, we are going to be having an informational briefing about the landfill. Now, I appreciate the support you guys gave on my resell. They did hear the resell, but it did not pass out of committee because ENV said that they are going to announce the new site in December, which is interesting because I'm sure many of you guys saw on the news that now they're talking about shipping the trash off island, which we've already gone through that. So I'm still confused if we really have a site or don't have a site. So I asked them to come and do a briefing in my committee tomorrow, 1 o'clock, so you guys can tune into that. Or there's gonna be a recording of it afterwards if you're not available to watch it live. But I am going to be asking very specific questions about what sites they're looking at. Are they on private land? Are they on federal land? Because I feel like we haven't really gotten a lot of answers from the administration. And for people in the West Side who have been waiting to hear the announcement of a site so we know that it will be leaving the West Side, I don't think that we've had a lot of, what is the word? Assurance that it's, that it's going to move. So again, I'm just gonna be giving them the benefit of the doubt, have them report tomorrow. Those are my three announcements, there's a lot of other things going on, but I thank everyone for being in contact with my office. I know many of you are in regular contact with Kika, who's my case manager, and she does kind of handle a lot of the homeless and the parks issues. And of course, thank you to HPD for what they do and with the Hono being there in Kapale as well, you know, their presence and of course, the outreach for the homelessness has helped a little. I know we still have a lot to do, so thank you, Chair, open for questions.
Mahalo. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns for our honorable councilwoman from the public? Any questions or concerns from the board members, we will get them to you and we can talk about them at the next meeting. And if there's anything, council member, if you want us to take a position on that you know that you're gonna bring before us, please get it to us seven days in advance so we can put it on the agenda and then we can actually have a discussion and compliance of the new guidance that we've received.
Mr. Chair. I did want to question, I had my hand up.
Dr. Dudley, you are a board member and cannot actually ask questions of this agenda item.
Would you repeat that, please? What?
You're currently a board member and board members cannot ask questions on the agenda items for third-party presenters, including from the electeds, if they were not sufficiently agendized, so.
When did all that happen? I've been asking questions at every meeting.
Yes, we did the briefing in the beginning. This is new guidance from the Office of Information Practices to the Neighborhood Board Commission and all Neighborhood Boards on how we're supposed to be conducting ourselves. And the most notable change is that board members are not able to ask questions to discuss any items from third-party presenters until such time that it is appropriately agendized. And right now, we have not agendized the things that honorable councilwoman has brought before us.
Yeah, so I think, board member, I think what you can do, I think what you can do is you can submit those and what Chair is asking me is if there is a item that rises to the level of discussion that I submitted to him so that we can have a discussion with all the board members and ask questions. So you can email me or him, you can tell me, hey, Andrew, I want to talk about these things, and then I can send it to Chair and we can have the discussion at the next Neighborhood Board.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I do want to say, I've never heard of anything so stupid. I think that it's a way of tying our hands so that we can't act. I think that this is not the way that Neighborhood Boards should be treated and this is not the way we act. We're supposed to take thoughts of the community and get them to people where it can be acted on. That's going to require that we speak to the people that have, that are giving presentations. That's just absolutely nuts, thank you.
Okay. The mahalo for the comments. The Chair will clarify that Second Vice Chair Dr. Kiony Dudley was out of order. He was speaking to a non-agenda item and we will engage that issue at a later time. So if the board members would like to talk about the new guidance, we can put it on the agenda and we can discuss it. Let's wait to the open comments section to get to that point. Okay.
May I interject for a moment? So until the, until the Chairs and Vices meeting, you can feel free to say as Chair.
Neighborhood Board Assistant, you are not recognized. I appreciate you trying to interject, but no, thank you. The guidance is fairly clear, it was circulated. And as the Chair, I am responsible to uphold the procedures and protocols. If there are questions, we can put it on. I unfortunately was unable to agendize it in time because I did not receive the guidance until after the agenda was submitted.
I would like to hear what the assistant- I would like to hear what the assistant has to say.
Um, Second Vice Chair, I appreciate you, but you are still out of order because you're asking a question not having to do with the current agenda. No, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that have comments, questions, or concerns for the council members? Andrew Tupola.
One hundred percent.
Okay, I see Veronica Munakata. Please go ahead. Introduce yourself and raise your comment, question, or concern.
Okay. Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we do. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I attended last Saturday Senator Gabbard's talk story. And they talked about the development across from Walmart. And it was very interesting. Now, I attended the first briefing, the gentleman provided, the developer. And they talked about nine hundred units. And at that time, he said something about fifty units being for sale. And on Saturday, suddenly it went to seventy-two units. And he explained how the first two would be built on the interior of of the land. And it's only nineteen some odd acres. That seems an awfully small piece of land for so many units, even though they are stacked and up. Now, my question would be, uh, we still have this problem about the traffic. And you realize that with all the housing being built around the old Barber's Point along the back end of it toward uh the Barber's Point Elementary School. That is going to increase our traffic enormously. Um. Is this wise? It's going to be a hassle. I live in Upper Rocka Kilo. And I have only one lane to get down to H1. And then the other, and then I run into all the other intakes from the Costco area and the um and the industrial area and now the north-south roads. So I'm looking at all this traffic. It's it's almost as if right hand not talking to left hand. They keep building, but the infrastructure is not helpful to accepting this building. Um, what is the city going to do when we have a snarl like on Como Mai Drive like they had last week? That too only has one way in and one way out, and it's four lanes. That's my comment and my question.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I did drop in the email address if you wanted to talk to the developer, Chris Flaherty, about across Walmart, because um, to your point, I don't know the exact units, but if the number keeps changing, I mean, I would like to know exactly what the last number is that they presented. Um, secondly, as far as the secondary access, we are very close to finishing the emergency access uh through the great specific property on Pueo Nani at the end of Makakilo. So that is going to actually provide immediate relief in the event of any emergency. I know in YNI, we have like four or five access roads that we do open up when there is traffic and we need to access or certain roads are blocked. And so I think it's going to be exponentially like advantageous for the residents of Makakilo. And I've been pushing with that. I will say, though, that our Department of Emergency Management Director, um, his name is Hero, he is going to be resigning next month, but I did tell him if we could finish it before he resigned, so we don't have to start all over again. But we are very far along. Grace Specific is willing. They actually already prepped the road so that if the gate is open, that it's actually drivable from there all the way down to the freeway, and it's actually a very quick five minutes, maybe less, to get uh to the freeway from Pueo Nani. So, long story short, that's the next step that I can see in the very immediate future for what's going to happen in Makakilo Drive. Can you tell me what happened?
Mahalo for the question and for the response from Honorable Councilwoman. Is there any other public member wishing to ask a question, raise a concern, or comment for her to consider at this time? Hearing none. Uh, thank you very much for the report.
Aloha, thank you.
And before we get to the Ompo report, I will address procedurally. I recognize that fellow board members are maybe frustrated with the current procedures that I am bound to as the Chair of our Neighborhood Board to keep us in compliance with the new guidelines. I believe that we can figure out a way in order to be more open in the ways that we do questions and comments and discussions as we are used to. But all of those things need to be agendized in advance. The problem with this month was the fact that the guidance was received after our agenda was already published. And we're not able to make sufficient changes, not because I, as the Chair, don't want to make changes, but it's unfair to ask all of the third-party presenters to provide of the substance in their reports for us to actually be in compliance of the law to be able to discuss the items. So I think if by next month, we should be able to work out um, a way that's a bit more similar to what we've done in the past um, with more homework from the third-party presenters in the future. And if there's any questions that you have about the updated procedures, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them because it's a procedural matter and it's um it is inhibiting um fellow board members from being able to engage as they would like to. So that that's totally fine. So at this time, I can uh, take any questions from fellow board members regarding the new procedures. Chair recognizes Second Vice Chair, Dr. Kyonid Dudley.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I I would really appreciate it if we would hear what the Neighborhood Commission um, our our assistant has to say. I I you know, it's possible that you are, if you just got the announcement, it's possible that you are misinterpreting it somehow. I would like to hear his input.
Yes, it is possible that I am misinterpreting um the the very clear language that says that the board members cannot um, on third-party presentations. So I am more than welcome to ask the Neighborhood Board Assistant to provide us with his reading of what goes on. But the question becomes whether or not that's binding because it's from him and not from the Office of Information Practice. So, but we can uh ask what the Neighborhood Board Assistant's mana'au at this time. Sure, go ahead.
Okay, Chair, apologies for the interruption earlier, but I was told by the Executive Secretary Lloyd Yunanaka that um the board can operate as usual until the the Chairs and Vice Chairs meeting on November fourth. So, um, but but at the end of the day, this is your board and it's your discretion as to whether to implement the rules tonight or um going forward after the Chairs and Vice Chairs meeting with the Executive Secretary.
Um, thank you for the guidance from the Executive Secretary to hold off. Appreciate that. Reading the guidance that was given by the Office of Information Practice, to me, it is very clear that they stipulate that if a subject matter or topic is not listed or described in sufficient detail on the agenda, then board members cannot ask questions, discuss, act, or vote. I do not believe that going to a meeting will change my mind on this interpretation. Chair recognizes uh board member Michaela Lindstone, and then go to Dr. Kyonid Dudley.
Mahalo, Chair, um, and thank you for that. Uh, I'd like to request that we go as usual as we have in in past meetings. There are important presentations tonight that I think the board would like to share mana'au on. And um if we could proceed as we have, um, and as the um as the assistant has shared, um then make the changes after the Chair and Vice Chair meeting. I'd like to request that, Chair. Mahalo.
So the request at this time is denied. I cannot in good conscience uh move forward with the guidance before me. However, to make note that this only applies to third-party presentations. These are the city reports and state reports, not the agendized presentations. Those are totally fine. We can discuss, we can vote, we can ask questions. It is only third-party reports. That's from HPD, on the Fire Department, Ompo, all of the electeds and state agencies. We are currently barred from actually asking them questions unless they are agendized in sufficient detail. Chair recognizes First Vice Chair Gordon. If you could unmute yourself, Second Vice Chair, please.
Mr. Chair, this is the first time we've ever had a disagreement, uh, but it's a very strong disagreement. And uh, I would like to move that we follow the um, exception that the Neighborhood Assistant has told us about. And that tonight, for the rest of the meeting, we uh act as we ordinarily have acted in the past and that we put off adopting any kind of new thing, no matter how deeply it appears to you that it contradicts reality. Um, I'd like to move that we move ahead as we have in the past.
So I hear a motion to add to the agenda. So the thing is, to grant your request, we would have to appropriately put this on the agenda by two-thirds majority. And then it can have it. The problem is, it would have to not actually, it would have to make the statutory exemptions in order to do that. And I will read the statutory exemptions and then we will determine whether or not um the board can overrule the Chair. That's totally fine, but my my understanding is that I have to comply with the guidance given. And the statutory exemption is one of large import, and the guidance comes from OIP. So I would think that that motion would be out of order. So I do not believe we can add that to the agenda at this time.
Is there a second to my motion?
There cannot be a second. The Chair still calls it out of order.
Mr. Chair, I don't really understand why you're being so insistent about this. I mean, there are some pretty major things that we need to talk about with uh Councilwoman Andrea Tupola. And I, um, you know, we're we're passing up another month. And I I I think this is a serious wrong. Um, and I think it is contrary to what our Neighborhood Board is all about. And I'll shut up with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the sentiment. I acknowledge the concern. I recognize that this is a shock to many of us. But again, I, as the Chair, your Chair, cannot in good conscience with the guidance brought before me, continue, even if the Neighborhood Board Executive, the Neighborhood Commission Executive Secretary said there's an exemption because I have received the OIP guidance, and it is very clear to me as the Presiding Officer, that we cannot on third-party um, reports that are not appropriately agendized, ask questions, or discuss in the meeting. If we have questions or you wish to discuss, you can do that with the elected outside of the meeting or during the meeting, but so long, but you're not using the meetings forum, in this case, WebEx. Like, there are ways to engage and ask questions if you would like, um, but I'm not going to showcase how to circumvent the law at this time. Now, having said that, let me, I can say that the presentations tonight, the actionable items tonight, the board members can ask questions, can deliberate, can comment as usual. We literally have one more report from Ompo that we can't ask questions. That is it. And then if we get to the state reports, then we are not able to ask questions or discuss or engage at that time. Like, again, I apologize that this comes as a shock, that people feel that this is something that goes antithetical to the Neighborhood Board spirit. What I can share is I too believe the same sentiment. However, with the guidance before me, I cannot in good conscience ignore it until such time that we appropriately address that guidance. Okay, um, Chair recognizes board member Amy Bosler.
Thank you, Chair. I uh respect your stance and your steadfastness and in um, following through with this new procedure. And I and how we appeal this or protest this or something. Um, it feels very limiting. I read the the um, the report that what came out to us on Friday, and I was expecting to discuss it. When you asked, I I do apologize, you did ask for questions prior to the meeting, and I couldn't get my I couldn't get my WebEx to unmute to ask my question. Um, just wondering what we can do to rectify this error. Thank you.
Um, so what I do believe that would be called for is that in the next month's meeting or at a special meeting, we could call to specifically discuss the new guidance from and how we can make sure we respect the guidance, but also get back to the what I believe is the the main forum and purpose, what I believe that many of us actually of this place, which is the exchange of kuka-kuka, the talking story, the free engagement of ideas. The part that for me seems quite for lack of a better word, asinine, it just bind boggles me, is that our board has no legal authority to make decisions. We are literally a forum to give advice and engagement, but so how do we respect the law that was written for not just neighborhood boards, but every board across the state? And they do have other functions, adjudicatory and other legal functions and power, while it seems limiting on us. So I think this is something that should be discussed by our board and all boards and probably will result in either re revamp guidance from the OIP or potentially having to make an exemption or carve out at the state level um in the what you revise statutes regarding the sunshine laws for third-party presentations to neighborhood boards. The good case point and example is from Doc Corporal Piggin, who said earlier, it's so much easier because we're all here to just talk about it. I agree. But the guidance is contrary, and that's the part that it sucks right now. And I don't even think we can put it on the agenda um to discuss today. Um, however, um, your question was, what can we do? I think we can have a special meeting to talk about this, I think, and we can have this on the agenda at the next meeting. And um, we can have we can even create a PIG, a permitted interaction group, in order to discuss this. Um, or we can defer this to a committee, any one of them, including Dr. Dudley's committee um, to go and talk about this on the appropriate agenda in the interim. So those are always, we can go and talk story about the new guidance and change that is stark. Um, like, so, and just to be clear, I recognize that it is stark and almost crazy.
Can I make a movement?
Yeah.
Can I make a movement to have a special meeting to discuss this and how to move forward? Or is that for you, Chair? I apologize if I'm out of order.
Oh, no, not at all. Um, like, asking about procedural things, that's why I'm taking the time right now, because it was out of order because with Dr. Dudley, because we were in the middle of a presentation. But now that we're talking about procedures, anything? Because this is an official board meeting, and if anything in the procedures are affecting your ability to actively participate as board members, I, as the Chair, have to address. So if if you want to call for a special meeting, I have no problem doing that. The closest we'll have is if if you want to call for a special meeting, I have no problem doing that. The closest we'll have is seven days um from now to agendize for that special meeting that we could do likely um if depending on what room facility we can secure. And hopefully in the interim, we can get more understanding um from the current discussions that are happening across neighborhood boards and the neighborhood board commission and office of information practice about how we can currently navigate this better. But again, I think if we appropriately agendize with sufficient details, um like we should be able to re retain maybe eighty, ninety percent of normalcy from before. We just got to put it in the agenda like.
And can we reach out to other boards on island to uh to discuss or to find out what they're doing or how the the steps that they're taking or is that a violation?
So um I believe you can communicate um without violating the sunshine law and talking to any um member of any other board. But you cannot talk to more than two other members in this board about what you were shared unless it's actually out of agendized meeting. So.
I just want to make sure everybody gets loved, okay?
I agree, Anthony. Everybody needs to get loved in this situation. It is so it's 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 a it's a bit much what what we're doing. So I I'm not trying to shut us down. I I'm just want to make sure that we we don't yet again get another violation okay complaint against board members for violating uh the sunshine law and having to waste time on that end. Uh if we can figure out how to do the procedures, um do the honor the guidance with the procedures in such a way that we can get back to as much as possible what we've done before, which is ask questions um discuss and uh engage with the third-party presenters. And from what I understand is we just need to put it into the agenda for next time. More more detail.
Hi, sweetheart.
I think somebody muted.
Somebody needs to mute.
Yep, um community member Veronica Munakata, if you could mute, that'd be great. Also, any other procedural um questions uh at this time now? Having said what I said on my position, if the board does feel um that um they would like to add
Danny, my battery is running low.
If they would like to add to today's agenda, the ability to more robustly discuss the material, we can place it on the agenda, but the the board would have to overrule me by uh two-thirds vote first. And then we'd have a doubt the two-thirds vote in order to put it on the agenda. And then um then we would have a oh yeah to put it on the agenda. So it's possible and I'm totally okay if you guys want to do that because that's the prerogative of the board. So those are all the options that I know of. Special meeting, you can overrule me and we can go through the votes to put it on uh today. Or we can wait uh for seven days from now or go to a committee meeting, or we can wait till next month. Okay, any other procedural questions at this time? Seeing none, um we will continue with the reports from third parties going to OMPO for Uncle Frank Gennario.
Yes, at this month's citizen advisory committee meeting, OMPO Executive Director Mark Garrity reported on an ongoing study on transit with over one thousand residents.
Cannot hear you. We can't hear you.
I'm I'm not muted. Let me uh see.
Just speak up a little bit, that's all. Frank muted himself.
Uncle Frank, can you try again, um please to unmute yourself and see if you can just speak up into the microphone? You were coming through earlier, uh just was quite soft. Okay, I'm not hearing from Uncle Frank at this time. Um let's circle back um to the Board of Water Supply and allow them to do their report and then we'll check with Uncle Frank after the Board of Water Supply report.
Right here. Aloha, Warren. I guess I apologize. I went to Kapale. Um I just have a couple announcements. There was one water main break in the Makakilo Kapale Honokai Hale area in September that was on the twenty-first where an eight-inch PVC water main installed in nineteen ninety-nine broke at ninety-one, one ninety-two quote only loop. Um we're announcing today our launch of our twenty twenty-five poster and poetry contest. Um the theme is Worth of Buy. The poster contest is open to grades K through six and the poetry contest to students in grades seven through twelve. The deadline to enter is February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Um you can go to boardofwatersupply.com slash WCWcontest. I also brought calendars for next year. Sorry, you guys are going to be the first to get them, but everybody in the room has them, so I will bring some for you guys next month. Um and I did just want to touch on uh Dr. Dudley's concerns that he had about development, the growing population and just general water concerns. Um and just kind of give the BWS stance. So we are just one of many agencies involved in the development permit approval process. Um the overall process is administered by DPP. We don't we don't necessarily encourage nor discourage any development. Our role is simply to review the request and determine if there's adequate water supply and infrastructure to support what is being proposed. We do require conservation measures on most projects, but we are not the final say on anything. So we just wanted to touch on those concerns a bit. Um with that, I'm happy to take back any questions or concerns for Board of Water.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions, comments or concerns from the general public for the Board of Water Supply? Any question, comments or concerns um from the board members? Please get them to me or the neighborhood board assistant and then we will communicate them to the Board of Water Supply or you may do so directly.
Uh Mister Chair Frank Gennario, can you hear me?
Yes, Uncle Frank.
Okay, could I go ahead? My report?
Yep, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, at this month's citizen advisory committee meeting, OMPO Executive Director Mark Garrity reported on an ongoing study on transit with over one thousand residents supporting transit and bike lanes. The policy board approved the Oahu work plan or OWP and will meet next week on twenty-eight October. Mister Garrity also showed a video for the Vision Zero mobile workshop that was taken on his trip to New York, Copenhagen, Malmo and Oslo, places that have successfully reduced roadway-related deaths and injuries. Collectively, these cities have adopted measures such as limiting vehicles on some roadway portions, creating business improvement districts to manage public spaces, making city centers walkable for pedestrians and bicycle-friendly and having excellent transit systems. Sweden is the safest nation in Europe with only twenty faith traffic fatalities per million people compared to a hundred and twenty per million in the US. Hawaii's rate of eighty-five per million is worse than any nation in Europe. Basically, the less dependence on driving, the safer the city. The CAC members' comments included concerns about driving lanes being taken away for bikes, that no e-bikes were seen in the video and apparently that there's an increased use of roundabouts in Europe. In response to a question on handy vans in Europe, Mister Garrity said he would have to check on that. I commented that here the bus competes with computing commuting cars and our rail system will not serve the majority of residents, pointing out the example of the state's plan for nine hundred more affordable residents in Kapale, not near any planned rail station. Uh the CAC then approved Neighborhood Board number twelve, Nu Uano Punchbowl as a new member. And finally, Nicole Smith of OMPO briefed the OWP calendar for fiscal years twenty-six and twenty-seven. OWP planning priorities are to work towards zero deaths on our roads with elements that include the Transportation Improvement Program, transportation alternatives, a bike plan, complete streets and multimodal planning, a monitoring program, mobility hubs and youth engagement. And OMPO is looking for feedback on this plan. Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you for the report. At this time, are there any questions, comments or concerns from the general public? Hearing none, um let's now um get ready for our presentations. But before that, um let me um try to address a question that was given by a third-party presenter from HPD Corporal Pagan. He asked the question about how, let me get this right. My apologies, Corporal Pagan. I lost the question, um but the the gist of it was how are people from the board able to ask questions if they don't know what's in the report? And the answer is um we need a summary um or highlights of what will be in the report um to be placed on the agenda. And then we can ask questions as board members and discuss. It's a matter of what we're notifying to the public. So for example, in the the last report we had on Honu, if you put in an update about um providing an update on the current statistics of Honu and HPD's involvement with it, then I believe that would have been sufficient for our board members to ask you questions about that because it was on the agenda. And deliberate um and potentially even take action on that because it was sufficiently agendized. So for third-party reporters, all we need is um more details um of what's in your report and so that we can get it on the agenda, a little bit more robust agendas than we're used to. And then we should be able to go back to questions and answers as board members. Hopefully that helps clarify that. Now, um let's go to our presentations uh for this evening. And to be clear, the presentations, uh board members are able to ask questions, raise concerns, comment, deliberate on the presentations. And the first presentation that we have this evening, we'd like to welcome up um the Hawaii Community Development Authority um with their ninety-nine-year leasehold program. Go right ahead.
Thank you, uh Chair Paris, Vice Chair Litstone and Vice Chair Dudley and the members of the board. Uh my name is Craig Nakamoto. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Community Development Authority. Um we're, thank you for allowing us to present uh on this project that we're working on. Uh we thought that this might be of general interest to the Makakilo Neighborhood Board because of their interest in housing. Um as you'll see in my presentation, uh as we as I go through the pilot program, what we're trying to do, we are not proposing a pilot program or the executionist pilot program in the Kalailoa district. But again, just trying to present this for um because I we thought that the board members would appreciate um knowing this general information. And um Francine Murray is also joins me and she's helping me advance the slides. So thank you, Francine. Next slide. Next slide, Francine. So in the twenty twenty-three legislature, a bill was proposed to create a pilot program um to facilitate the development of lower-cost leasehold residential condominium units for sale to Hori residents on state-owned non-seated lands near public transit stations. This was codified as Act Ninety-seven. Next slide. But you know, um we, I think most of us recognize that in in the state of Hawaii, there is a need for more housing. Um and I I believe that to address the housing issue that there's a need for housing of all types, uh rental fees, fee units, uh rentals for Kupuna, you know, rentals, other kinds of rentals, supportive housing for others. So this um ninety-nine-year leasehold condominium project really asks us to test the feasibility of a ninety-nine-year uh leasehold product on one um state on one for one state-owned land um and to determine whether the market would um accept this kind of uh leasehold product. So we're looking at uh a a possible site in the Kakako district for this pilot program uh and see if it's gonna work um and be marketable of as a as a as a ninety-nine-year leasehold unit. We've we've been provided with some funding for site selection, pre-development, planning and adoption of administrative rules and to engage the community. Next slide. This pilot program has certain criteria uh that we need to follow for this pilot. It requires buyers to be qualified residents of the state. It requires buyers to be owner occupants of the units. It prohibits owners of the units to have other interests in um either residential or non-residential real properties while owning this condominium unit. It prohibits the rental or subleasing of the condominium unit and also gives HCD, HCD the uh first right of refusal to purchase a unit that's proposed to be sold. Next slide. The pilot program also provides that upon the death of the owner, um it provides for a transfer of the condominium unit to qualified heirs, meaning qualified buyers who meet that criteria or being a resident, no other uh residential or commercial unit. Provides for exemption from the owner occupant requirements where there's uh circumstance of hardship like military deployment. Uh if HCD does not exercise that right of few first refusal, the unit can be sold to other qualified buyers. And it also requires us to adopt administrative rules, which we are working on currently. The HCD board approved administrative rulemaking in May of twenty twenty-four. We conducted a community meeting uh on August thirteenth. We presented this to the Kakako Neighborhood Board and we're presenting it to this board and then after this board will uh finish drafting the rules. Uh and then um the administrative rules will go through two public hearings before being finalized. Thank you very much for your time and open to uh any questions or comments.
Aloha, mahalo, noa for the um presentation. Um at this time, uh board members are able to ask questions, are able to deliberate and engage with the presenters as it was appropriately agendized. And again, I apologize to my colleagues. But we we are able to discuss regularly. Um so let's go to fellow board member Mick Ferrer and then to second vice chair Dr. but we, we are able to discuss regularly. Um, so let's go to fellow board member Mick Ferrer and then to second Vice Chair Dr. Kiyomi Dudley afterwards. Go ahead.
Hi there. Thank you for your presentation. Um, with this presentation, is there any targeted, uh, parcels or anything that the H C D A has in our particular area?
Um, member Ferrer, uh, right now, we do not, this pilot program authorized us to do only one pilot, uh, project. And we're looking for, at a parcel in the, in our Kakakua district. Right now, we don't have a plan to do this yet in our Kalailoa district. However, remember for if, if this pilot proves successful. And what we're trying to do is have this, uh, kind of program be replicatable. In other words, if it's successful, we, you know, in, on one product, on one parcel in Kakakua, then maybe we could try to do it on a parcel in Kalailoa or another parcel in some other area, uh, provided it's state owned. So I hope that answers your question, member Ferrer. But right now, the pilot is aimed for, uh, some parcel in the Kalai, uh, Kakakua district.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Ferrer.
Chair recognizes Dr. Kiyomi Dudley.
I, I think that kind of answers my question. I, um, wondered why you're talking to us, but evidently it's, uh, if things are successful in Kakakua, then there might be some kind of building out here. And so you're just kind of making us aware. Is that correct?
I, I am. Thank you, uh, Member Dudley for the question. Um, we are in, because Kalailoa is also one of our districts, obviously, you know, we thought we would present it to, um, the Kalai, uh, Makakilo Board Members for general interest at this time. And hopefully, if this is successful as a pilot in Kakakua, we can look to other areas in, um, where it could be also be replicated. Thank you, Member Dudley.
Chair recognizes First Vice Chair, uh, Michaela Lindstol.
Mahalo Craig for that great presentation and mahalo too for coming to this board, um, just giving us the heads up, even though this is gonna mostly take place in Kakakua. For now, just one question, how long do you think the, um, feasibility study will take?
So, um, right now, we have a, um, we have a, we're right in the middle of this feasibility study. We're kind of having this, uh, developer kind of crunch some numbers. Uh, and I think by maybe mid twenty twenty five or summer of twenty twenty five, we should have a pretty good idea whether it, one, we should have the site locked down, um, before then, and then maybe by summer of twenty twenty five, we should have a pretty good idea whether this project is gonna be feasible or not. Uh, if it's feasible, uh, looks feasible, then, um, we would try to enter into kind of, you know, pre-sale, uh, of these units. And, you know, with, with a leasehold unit, um, with a leasehold unit, even though it's ninety nine years, the question is always about pricing. How, how can we get the pricing lower? Uh, so, for example, compared to a comparable fee unit, our leasehold unit has to, I think, to be marketable to people as a leasehold unit. It's gonna have to be priced a little bit lower than a comparable fee unit. And that's the test is really to see whether, um, these units are marketable and sellable on, uh, you know, on the market. Thank you, Member Lindstol.
Are there any other fellow board members that have questions, comments or concerns with the presentation from this evening? Hearing none, uh, from fellow board members, are there any question, comments or concerns for, um, H C D A regarding tonight's presentation on the ninety nine year lease? Hearing and seeing none, uh, thank you very much for the, um, presentation and appreciate you coming before us and giving us a heads up early.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chairs and the board. Um, I'll be signing off now, but, um, Francine will continue to be on, uh, on the meeting as well. And, um, later we'll provide you with some updates as we get closer to twenty twenty five and determining feasibility.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo. Now, let's go to our next presentation, um, from Laulima Hawaii on the two one H Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation and Propose Affordable Housing Development in Kapole.
Hello, Chair, uh, Chair Paris, Vice Chair Lidstone, Second Vice Chair Dudley. It's been a long time. And fellow board members, aloha. My name is Kalana Park. And it's good to be back. Um, it's been about twelve, thirteen years since I helped to develop the Kapole East area, I would say. Um, so good to be back. Oh, my light just went off. Hold on for a second, yeah. Okay, and I'm, uh, really blessed to be a part of this, uh, Laulima Hawaii team. This is our first community meeting coming out and, uh, obviously part of it is to fill, fulfill the two one H application process, which is just started. Uh, but the other is, you know, even back when we, uh, did the regional plan back in Kapole at my previous place, it's always important to touch base with the community first. And so that's what we're doing here is to making sure that not only it's the first touch, I'm sure will be, uh, many, many updates, uh, throughout the project as well too. So, uh, mahalo again for, for having us. Uh, so as we know, once known as Kapole West, which is over, what, over five hundred acres, now we call it, uh, Laulima Hawaii. Uh, some of you know this already, but in the late eighteen hundreds to the mid nineteen hundreds, the upper plains was all ag, ag land and particular sugar, right? And our entire site resides in Pu Kapole and Pu, uh, Pa Laila. So Laulima, as we all know, is, uh, many hands working together, right? And the key is in, in unity. I like to coin it the, uh, having a collaborative spirit, you know? And so that's what our team is, uh, is, is comprised of. It's a, you know, it's a big team and we're only doing the, uh, site work and some of the mass grading. And, uh, we're really excited to see what, um, we're gonna do, but, uh, since, since the acquisition of these lands back in early twenty twenty two, our consultants and our engineers and our design team, uh, mass grading has been going on for, since that time. Uh, site work is primarily for what we'll be, uh, talking to you about today, which is the Workforce Affordable Housing Project. We've moved over, what, uh, six hundred, uh, fifty thousand, uh, cubic yards of, uh, of dirt so far, and we are conforming to all of the current zoning and the entitlements, uh, that is affiliated with the site, the entire site. So one site that we're not gonna, uh, you won't see tonight is the Regional Shopping Mall. And this is located, uh, right across from Kapole Commons or the parking lot of the Honolulu Advertiser building. So in there, we are planning a grocery store, um, mini self-storage and some inline retail. And we have some other, uh, spots that, uh, will be available and hopefully we can put something meaningful that will complement that, um, the Kapole Commons area and the entire area. Our future site, the entire site amenities will include approximately five miles of trails and park systems, bike paths, clubhouse, pool, and that's just the beginning of what we're doing. So, uh, right now, we're currently, uh, under design for the master planning of the entire site. But we wanted to start off, uh, first with this, uh, uh, workforce affordable housing. And Mr. Chair, mahalo for your folks', uh, draft resolution that, um, supports the quality of life and, uh, the sus- sustainable design elements. Uh, we will definitely take this into consideration and we hope to include, um, a good portion of those design elements that you folks have put forth. Again, we'll be back, uh, once we complete the master plan. We'll come back out and, and share with you what we've, what we have. But the key, and I heard it in the beginning, is the traffic, right? So, I think, um, not sure if many of you are aware, but the State Harbor Access Road Interchange, which is led by, uh, D O T highways, as we know. So their off-ramp is planned, uh, to open up sometime in early next year. And the on-ramp is projected to open in late twenty twenty five. Again, this is D O T highways, uh, project, right? So obviously this will help alleviate the current, uh, traffic congestion at the H one and Kalailoa interchange. And Kalailoa, Kapole Parkway intersection as well too. This also will come down, uh, right, right past our, um, affordable, uh, workforce, affordable housing project and also access to the, uh, regional shopping channel that we're doing. Uh, the good news is that it'll be open way ahead of time of our vertical construction of the project. So, um, we won't need to, um, and, and you folks and everybody on, in Kapole will be able to utilize, uh, the State Harbor Access Road. Uh, in terms of our infrastructure plans, uh, they are on track and definitely enough to support our first phase of development. So tonight, I really to, uh, wanted to address what is this affordable workforce housing project that we are leading off with? So we're super excited to, to get going on this. We have a group, uh, and, uh, uh, it's called the Kamaka Responsible Development. Uh, nationally, and I think even internationally, it produced over thirty thousand affordable, you know, housing units. So, I think they know what they're doing. Uh, so we're very blessed to have them on our team. So here to tell us more about the location and the site plan and even the floor plans is the CEO of Kamaka Responsible Development, uh, Kip Shepherd. Kip, oh, be, before I call him up, um, Chair, wanted to ask, uh, do you folks have the slides or do we run our own slides? Sorry.
Um, both is possible. Uh, you should be able to share, um, on your end to drive it right now. Go ahead.
I will do that. So Kip, if you want to introduce yourself and I'll tee us up.
Thank you, uh, mahalo Kalana and aloha, uh, Chair Paris and board members and, uh, members of the community and neighborhood. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to present to you and introduce you to, um, seven hundred and fifty units that we're planning that will be rent restricted, affordable and workforce housing. As Kalana touched upon, uh, in the first, the slide here, give him a chance to, to bring that up. Our seventeen point seven acres is a part of a larger group of parcels that were, um, uh, accumulated and comprised almost four hundred and ninety five acres, approximately four hundred and ninety five, four hundred and ninety five acres that were acquired in two thousand and twenty two. Uh, Kamaka Responsible Development has been engaged by the land ownership group, uh, to develop, uh, the restricted, the rent restricted affordable component of this community. And this will allow the community, the larger land ownership group to meet their affordable housing requirement. The principles of Kamaka, I just want to touch upon that briefly and, and Kalana touched upon it. We've, uh, uh, have been, uh, responsible and developed, constructed and managed, um, uh, just over fifty five thousand units of housing, uh, multi-housing for seniors and families, um, across the country. Um, we have, um, in that fifty five thousand units, about thirty thousand units of those have been what we would call affordable housing and workforce housing. Um, and so we bring, um, a, a lot of depth and a, a deep experience, um, to the table to make sure that this community will be something that all of us can be proud of and will meet, uh, the needs of, uh, the local, uh, neighborhood and community, uh, for housing. Uh, and, and this record that, this track record that we're bringing, uh, not only is in the development area, but in the construction area and also, uh, in the management area as well. Um, the Laulima affordable, uh, component is, is planned to consist of four phases. And Kalana, you still working on? Yeah, I am. Yeah, sorry. All right. Uh, but I'll, I'll keep going and I can go back. We can point those phases out to you. But the four phases, um, and once again, um, I, I've got Jackson Shepard here with me, who's also a member of our Kamaka Responsible Development Team. And then we have other members of our team, both, um, in our development group and in our construction group. And, and as we get to the comments and questions section, we may engage some of those, uh, members of our team here to help you, to help us answer some of those questions. But it'll be broken up into four phases. The first phase will be a seventy unit, uh, senior community that will be, um, at and less than eighty percent of the area median income. A one hundred and eighty unit family community that will be at and less than eighty percent of the area median income. And then two, uh, a two hundred and thirty six unit community that will be at, uh, and, and less than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. And a two hundred and sixty four unit community that will also be, um, less than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. That comprises the seven hundred and, uh, fifty units. Kamaka in this process will engage, uh, local vendors, uh, local contractors, local consultants. We are already in that process. We have our civil engineer is Kaufman, which is a, a local, uh, uh, engineering company. Goodfellas Brothers is, is our, uh, contractor right now that's helping us with the dirt work that's being done there. And we've, um, been working very closely with Leighton Construction, which has offices in Kauai and, um, on Oahu as well as, uh, a long, a long track record, um, in the islands of, of, uh, construction. And so we'll be using other, um, local vendors once again and, and, uh, consultants and contractors as well. Laulima affordable, the seven hundred and fifty units is planning on offering the following amenities. Um, it'll, there'll be access to community gardens, storage facilities for bikes, e-bikes and motorcycles. Um, as Kalana mentioned, access to an extensive trail and path system. There'll be solar, um, efficient hot water systems, high efficiency windows, drip irrigation and edible and natural landscaping. Uh, our community will, will be proud to boast the lowest utility cost of any housing community in West Oahu as a result of, uh, our solar and, and sustainable, uh, materials that we'll be using, including, um, Energy Star appliances. Um, it will be E V ready. Um, it will also have three clubhouses with well-planned common areas for gatherings, two pools and more than adequate parking for all of the various unit types, uh, that we're proposing. This is the site plan, uh, right here, um, that Kalana is presenting to you. And you can see there State Harbor Access Road and Kapole Parkway, uh, which is the location of our community. Um, and, and the right of the screen actually represents north. So if you start at the south end or the left side of the screen, uh, that was, that's phase one and two. And then phase three and four go across the property as I, as I mentioned those, those phases to you. Go to the next slide, please, Kalana. Um, even one more slide. To get, oh, uh, it looks like we've, you've passed up the elevations that we had. Are they, uh, previous to these slides? Yeah. Go to slide four there on your, your elevations. Just wanted to mention that, uh, we'll have carports. And on those carports, we'll, that, there you go. Uh, there's some of our elevations will be, um, right there, the, the roofs, uh, flat roofs, uh, that will be able to, will be able to install solar on the roofs. You can see the carports where there will also be solar, um, as well. Um, uh, hardy plank siding. And then if you go, I think to the next slide after this. And just another, uh, view of it. And then the next slide and even one more.
And then this is, uh, where the master plan sits in relation to, this is where the affordable housing sits in relation to.
Correct. The dark, the dark area, that's the seventeen point seven acres that we were talking with you about right now. That will contain the seven hundred and fifty units of rent restricted, affordable and workforce housing. Um, and then with the rest of the almost five hundred acres that, that has been acquired. And as Kalana mentioned, will come before you at different times when those are ready, uh, to come. Just wanted to mention also that, uh, for the seniors, we'll have studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Um, there's only six studios, so most of the units will be ones in two bedrooms. Um, the one, twos and three bedrooms, you can see there, six hundred square feet, um, almost nine hundred square feet for the two bedroom and eleven twenty two for the three bedroom. And then if you go to the next, and, and with, with these on, on the two, the first two phases where they're below eighty percent A M I, our rent levels will be in the eighteen hundred to the twenty nine hundred, uh, a month range. Um, we're actually targeting lower than eighty percent A M Is. That's why we're, uh, talking with H H. uh, talking with HHFTC will be utilizing loan comp housing tax credits and tax ZEM bonds to help finance the project. And so the AMIs will actually be closer to the sixty percent level, but um, we're, we're showing you the eighty percent levels now. Um, the square footage is on this next slide. Uh, this would be for what we're calling the workforce housing. It consists of ones, twos and three bedrooms. Um, six hundred and fifty-five square, square feet for the ones, nine seventy-one for the twos and twelve eighteen for the three bedrooms. Uh, the rent levels that were, the max rent levels that we can charge there are thirty-one hundred to forty-three hundred. Currently in our pro forma, we're showing in the twenty-eight hundred to thirty-eight hundred range for rent levels. Um, once again, trying to make it more affordable and more geared towards workforce housing. Um, I think just wanted to mention that um, the, the, as Kalana mentioned, uh, this is, you know, with, with the uh, the retail center that we're having, that will be done uh, uh, you know, at the same time that this is being completed as well. It really makes our location very strategic in terms of proximity to a grocery store, daycare, and then also um, uh, this is down the road, but that site um, has to be able to accommodate a future light rail system as well. So if that does make its way to this part of the, of the island, um, we'll be ready for that and be able to make good use of that um, light rail system uh, to help with uh, traffic and, and to get uh, people to the, to work centers. Um, the final mention that I wanted to make is that uh, as you're aware, Governor Green commissioned a study uh, which shows a fifty thousand unit deficit for housing um, in Hawaii. Um, Governor Green also has identified this particular project as one of the projects that can help to satisfy the demand of the fifty thousand units. Um, so we're excited about that, excited about working on this, excited about helping um, the state of Hawaii to solve its housing affordability and availability needs and problems and issues. And uh, thank you. Mahalo. We're, we're grateful to be here tonight. We feel it's a privilege to be with you in this neighborhood and uh, we're open to any comments or questions.
Mahalo Kip, uh, Ekalama, uh, Chair and uh, Board Members for the technical difficulties. So uh, but thanks to Connor. Connor, thanks for firing it up. Yeah. But at this time, we'll open it up to questions for you folks.
Okay. All over the presentation, um, question, comments, concerns from fellow board members. Chair recognizes second Vice Chair Dr. Kiyomi Dudley.
I'm concerned about hurricanes. I don't know if you were aware of the programs that the Neighborhood Board is sponsored. But uh, you know, we'd uh, we've got to start building every building to withstand a category five hurricane. And uh, there's just no ifs, ands and buts about it. We're getting uh, the, you know, the three, four and five hurricanes are becoming much more common. Uh, we're moving into a, a period when we're only going to have three, four and five, and we're right in the path. It's absolutely insane for us to allow any kind of future building of even one house without uh, it being able to withstand a category five. What are you doing about this?
Uh, uh, well, um, well, the good thing is, is that um, insurance underwriters won't insure your buildings unless they um, are uh, capable of withstanding the storms that we see on the island. So um, we uh, uh, can't operate without insurance. Um, and we don't want to either. So we uh, have designed the building to withstand the winds and and all those things. Uh, Kalana and our team, Kavika, um, we've, we have people on our team who built locally on the island. We built on the island before. So we're aware of all those weather issues and making sure that we're implementing um, uh, building techniques and um, uh, materials and products that can withstand all those issues.
Kavika, maybe you could speak uh, just really briefly to that from a construction perspective?
Sure. Uh, my pleasure, Kip. Um, uh, most of the project is uh, five and six story buildings. Uh, and we're utilizing type one and type three construction for these buildings, which means the first story of the building is going to be complete CMU, concrete filled cell, and the upper floors will be steel construction. Even though type three doesn't require us to use steel construction, all, all structural supporting walls are going to be steel. So the, the, the buildings uh, are going to meet and exceed uh, all the standards that are in place today to construct this type of building.
Um, thank you, but uh, tell me, uh, I, I, I realize there're going to be steel and and cement and it, it looks good, but uh, are you going to have windows that will withstand the category five? Um, you know, we, we've got to have places that one hundred percent will withstand what we're going to be hit with, and we know we're going to be hit with it in the future.
I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good comment. Uh, and the current design of the building is to withstand um, all the current criteria that is required by these buildings uh, for what we're building. Uh, I, I can't say that there's any product out there that is, is withstanding for a category five store completely. Um, I would be remiss to say yes, absolutely. Um, but I assure you uh, all, all, all specifications that are required for a building of this, of, of this stature is, is being um, is being utilized in the construction of these buildings.
Okay. I, I don't believe that the um, current building code actually requires category five um, inability to withstand. The current building code is uh, has also by our city council. This is one of the things I wanted to bring up tonight with as Councilwoman uh, Kupola. Uh, the city council has uh, exempted uh, anybody in your area which that they call uh, the one hundred and thirty mile an hour winds area. Um, they exempted you from doing anything in actual fact.
Well, go ahead, Kip. Did you have a comment?
No, no, no. No, no, I, I, I was go ahead and continue. Um, I, 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 I think that we're, as Kavika has stated, uh, we're, we are going above and beyond the current code and we are not asking for any exemptions from uh, the current code that would, that, that would help, that, that would cause us to build something less than what is required. And once again, as Kavika stated, we're going beyond that as well. And as Kavika also stated, I think, although I um, respect your, your comments, uh, Dr. Dudley and appreciate them very much and, and, and agree with them. Um, I, I don't know that we can guarantee that what we're building from a, from a window perspective could withstand that. We're, we're doing our very best to do that, though.
Thank you. Let me just say that there are windows now that can withstand category five. It's only happened in the last couple of years. The military is the primary buyer of those windows. And uh, we're hoping that they're going to become much more common here on the island.
We would, we would love to get that information from you um, so that we make sure that we're, we're looking at it. If, if we're not already looking at it, we, we would love to get that information from you.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you um, for the questions, Dr. Dudley. And to follow up before I get to um, remember, Mikiella Lindstone and then McFerrara uh, wanted to clarify in the draft resolution of that we will be taking up later. Um, the community members have brought up, including Dr. Dudley, about the use of reinforced structures up to category five and also making sure that there is um, uh, disaster, um, disaster sheltering uh, location in proximity in your project because we do not have places to evacuate to. So if the project cannot all be category five resistance for all six floors, where you have a floor, where you have common space by which people can go to, because there is literally nowhere else they can go on in proximity to your development um, to actually withstand that. So that's what we want to ask and you consider. And Dr. Dudley rightly pointed out that most of the standards right now are not in concert with the realities that we know is happening. So that's why the Neighborhood Board has put that down in its development wishlist. Because we see this happening right now. So we're like, we got you, but we know this will be a problem. So can, can you consider it? Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we hear you. Thank you. Mahalo.
Now let's go to Board Member Lindstone.
Yeah, mahalo Nui. Um, many years ago, uh, through the grapevine, it was said that that land would be a golf course and I'm happy that it is going to housing. Um, and uh, the seventeen acres housing and then the retail, but you have four hundred more acres. And um, I hope it doesn't go to a golf course, but it continues to serve the community. Your design and your presentation looks like a lot of thought has gone into thinking about the community, the green spaces, the trails, the solar, the bike paths, the drip irrigation. That's really everything a community, that's much of what a community needs for its well-being and um, I thank you for that. Great presentation. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, Vice Chair.
Chair recognizes Board Member Mick Ferrera.
Hi, thank you very much for a good presentation. A couple of questions that might have gotten past me, maybe answered it. On the Kapuna housing, it sounded like the affordable rents um, are higher than what somebody who would be on a normal pension or social security would be able to afford. Is that not what's in the plan as far as affordability for Kapuna units?
So what, what's currently required for us to meet the affordable requirements is is the seven hundred and fifty units of which two hundred and fifty of those seven hundred and fifty have to be at eighty percent or less a, uh, area median income. Um, many of you might know that it's very difficult to finance an eighty percent area median income community. Um, there really is no financing available for that type of, 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 of uh, uh, demographic um, uh, of area median incomes. So what we're showing to you or what we presented to you showed the eighty percent rents or the eighty percent area median income rents, we're targeting much lower rents in actuality. If, if you, when you get a chance and you see our, our um, pro forma that we will submit to HHFTC for nine percent credits, you'll see that our average MI, AMI or area median income for the senior or Kapuna community will be around the forty-three percent AMI level, which uh, will then bring the rents down to where uh, I think where, where you would see that it's below someone's pension and in that area. Um, but what we're showing you is what, is what's required of us, but in actuality, that's it's not financeable. We, we, we have to go and, and, and and we'll, we will subject ourselves to the nine percent credit competition, which causes us to further restrict our rents, which is what we're doing.
And tho- those credits are so competitive, it, it sometimes takes developers eight to ten years um, to get those credits and that financing and um, really our Kapuna can't wait um, for more housing. Uh, we already are in a crisis and so um, we, we'd love to lower the rents and take advantage of that sixty percent rent uh, level and financing, but uh, some housing we believe is better and it will all be restricted below eighty percent at a minimum.
Yeah.
And, and then the other thing I have too is that out in that area uh, with that many units going in, there's probably going to be more uh, phases or I guess you guys have just the four phases, but there'd be more housing going in, but what kind of planning has there gone, gone into like maybe another high school or any of the schools um, that, that may be needed or additional police or fire?
So we um, we uh, the, the master planner, it, it takes care of that and we're just working on the affordable housing, but um, as part of the two oh one H application, we've talked to um, the schools and the various agencies, you know, at the state level and um, the uh, school, the, the, I know that there's land set aside in the master plan for a potential new school, but currently the school district does not have plans to utilize that. Um, and then uh, there is also talks of uh, satellite police and or fire station somewhere in the master plan too. But again, we're, we are just focusing on the affordable housing and we've heard that through the grapevine, through our, you know, various um, meetings with the, the local city, you know, city and county government.
Yeah. Board Member Ferrer, if I could interject, yeah. So we are uh, as I said earlier, we're still finishing up on the design and the master planning, but uh, definitely the school is one um, that we, we know that we have to alleviate and adjust that too. So if we can, we will. And that's uh, can't say it's uh, don't quote me on this, but we're looking, hardly looking into that as well as the fire, fires as well too. Yes.
Okay. All right.
When we come back, when we come back, when we complete the master plan, uh, we'll come back with it.
Yeah. We've had conversations with uh, Mayor, Mayor Blagiardi about a satellite police as well.
Okay. All right. Appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member.
Any other board members have questions, comments or concerns at this time regarding the presentation? See, um, um, let's go to the community at large. Chair recognizes community member Thad Sprague.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I apologize for the bad lighting in my but it looks like me sitting in the dark, but I'm really here. Um, I wanted to come back to the topic of affordable. Um, you gave some numbers and I didn't quite catch them all, but I think I got most of them. So you're going to have seven hundred and fifty units, two hundred and fifty of them are going to be at eighty percent. And the remaining five hundred are going to be a hundred and twenty percent?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's an average of a hundred and seven percent, which means these are not going to be affordable to the majority of people by definition. So, yeah.
Yes, so what? Well, yeah, um, as, as we said, it's, it's affordable and workforce housing and also the two hundred and fifty units, even though it's at eighty, that, that's at the eighty percent level. And I think that that will be actually at a lower AMI and you'll see that those will be affordable. The balance of the project, I think, will be more at the workforce level. That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So affordable isn't really affordable. That's what I thought. And that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, committee member Thad Sprague. Uh, let's go now to committee member Veronica Munikata. Question, comments or concerns regarding this presentation?
Yes. Um, three things. This is a community and there's not rental. So that means they're going to have to have some kind of association to make up um, the cost of maintaining these areas to include bike trails, et cetera, et cetera, which means eventually it might not be affordable because we're not even considering. We're talking about just the mortgage or the rent or whatever, but the HOA is going to go up. Because as you know, workforce means you have to have somebody groundskeeping. Okay. Secondly, flood zones. This area is prone to flooding. It's flat. I'm sorry. I'm kind of concerned about that because that means flood zones means higher insurance rates, which again becomes a real issue for homeowners and for the seniors that have to live there. Third, uh, interior entries. I assume since it's a closed building, you're going to have elevators and stairwells and uh, you're going to have interior um, walkways, entries from the halls to the units. That becomes a problem if in fact you don't have an exterior entry other than a window. Um, if you remember Marco Polo, they had this ridiculous idea that they didn't have to have uh, fire suppressant doors, fireproof doors. And when a fire started in one of the units, the lady across the hall, three units down died because the smoke went through one house into her unit. And her son, who I met, couldn't get to her fast enough because he was at work and she was elderly. So again, the safety features here have to be extremely well thought out. And I'm sorry, interior hallways are kind of a death trap for both firefighters and residents. Um, I'm a little concerned about the cost overall about the association upkeep. Trails, bike paths, green space, cost money. I sit on a board and let me tell you, it gets really expensive when you compute insurance and HOA fees plus the pools. So I'm just saying, again, like Thad said, affordable may not be affordable.
So if I could try to address your, your, your questions and, and if I've So if I could try to address your 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 questions and and if I forget one of them, please let me know. But the first question regarding the HOA fees, we've already negotiated with the land ownership group that this project would be exempt from homeowner association fees. It is affordable. There will not be any HOA fees, so we we can't, they can't increase something that's not there.
And and we don't um, we don't set the rents. HUD does, the the federal government does, so
Correct.
Um, you know, uh, w- we can't say one year there's going to be a ten percent increase. It's just the you, uh, on average, the rent increase um, from HUD and uh, the city and county hollow is three point one percent um, whereas uh, market rents in the city and county hollow for market rate non-restricted units um,
Since two thousand and seventeen.
Since two thousand seventeen have grown about five point six to six percent, so roughly double. So our rents are are raising much lower and again, we we don't control the rents um, and we can only charge their restricted. We can't charge more than what the federal government tells us.
Tells us, so yeah, but but as a result of that, because the rents are fixed and because they are determined by HUD through their AMI uh, rent calculator, um, this project will be exempt from homeowner association fees. The second question that you had was regarding a flood zone. Maybe if uh, one of our construction guys could address that, maybe Kavika as to the flood zone and 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 what's being done regarding that?
Um, currently, uh, we're 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 not situated in 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 a flood plain, uh, kit um, and
Right.
The the, as as Colana pointed out, there's been, we've, all the sites have been also raised um, from from their o- original um, from their original uh, what they were. Uh, all the sites have been raised. Um, and and if I can on that other question, uh, I I think it's very important on the safety measure um, that all these buildings are fully sprinkled. So um, they're we, they're in compliance with the type one, which is a two hour and a three hour burn rating and exterior walls a two hour burn rating, interior walls a one hour burn rating and a fully, a fully sprinkled building. Uh, those corridors will also be conditioned space, so we don't have to worry about Capuna uh, or anybody of ill health having to worry about uh, um, uh, heat issues or anything like that inside the building, inside the corridors. Uh, so I I think um, I think we've um, I I hope that addressed that question, Kim.
Oh, it did. Um, when can I move in?
We, I would, I would add to that.
Saying rental, okay, so there are none for sale.
None of, none of these.
None on this property.
None on this property that we're talking with you today, the seventeen point seven acres. These are all for rent.
Oh, thank you very much. Answered all my questions.
And I I would add to that. I I would ask and add to that right here, right alongside this, the parcel is actually a hundred year drainage ditch. Um, for all the flooding issues, i- it's massive. It's probably thirty feet deep and fifty feet wide. It's 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 um,
The previous, the previous owner spent um, somewhere in the range of thirty-five million dollars building that that culvert to to satisfy all all flood issues that are coming from um, the mountains.
Well, thank you very much um, for providing those awesome answers for our community member. Appreciate you addressing that there is a plan for the hundred year flood uh, event uh, in the area. Let's now go to community member Frank Canadio.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to comment, uh, Mr. Shepherd mentioned a proximity to a light rail system in the future. Uh, the current rail plan uh, does not move the system west of East Kapole. Uh, the city council has a locally preferred alternative that takes it to West Kapole. However, that's unfunded and the current plan for completion in twenty thirty-one. And uh, you referred to light rail. I think our skyline is really uh, something above light rail.
Okay, I I apologize. No, no, no offense was was intended.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, the uh, this um, this, these two parcels right here south of Kapole Parkway are actually TOD. Um, there are TOD requirements there, so we're we're required to
Have a TOD overlay.
Overlay to enable the um, uh,
Future expansion.
The future expansion of the rail.
If if it happens, correct.
Thank you for verifying that. Um, thank you Uncle Frank for bringing up what our current um, rail transit um, plans are. And um, if we can't get the uh, Honolulu rail there, we might be able to work with the um, the historic rail society in order to actually um, work on um, points of egress and ingress there because they already have a right of way through the area uh, from above.
And by the way, Mr. Chair, we're gonna be uh, speaking to them as well too, so, Malo, yeah.
Okay, any other question, comments or concerns from the board members or from the general public? Okay, seeing that, I just really greatly appreciate the fact that you all came here um, early in your process um, to get our feedback and engage with us and um, already contemplating many of the um, design elements that are uh, community members have highlighted over their years of experience with multi-unit developments around here. Including making sure that we have appropriate safety measures and uh, air conditioning or passive cooling um, for our community members in the upper lane.
Got it.
Awesome.
Mahalo Chair.
Mahalo Chair, thank you for all all of your hospitality and and for uh, for your aloha and greeting us tonight. Thank you.
Yes. Hello.
Now, let's go to our next um, presentation of the evening with the Hawaiiiki Cable Landing Station. Again, we are back to normal, so all board members can ask questions, cause raise concerns and comment. So let's welcome the Hawaiiiki Cable Landing Station uh, presenters from ERM.
Thank you and mahalo to the chairman Paris, to the uh, to the board uh, and to uh, the community members. Aloha, kiara, uh, malo alele and g'day. So uh, I'm John Bradfield. Uh, I'm a Tongan from Australia, working for a New Zealand company that's investing in Hawaii. Uh, and the first point I'm gonna go to uh, is the name of our company. Uh, we have been in uh, Hawaii now for six years in operation. And when I did these presentations, the early community engagements uh, seven years ago, the first thing that uh, created concerns was the name and the word Hawaiiiki. Uh, or in in Maori, uh, Hawaiiiki. Uh, so I wanted to address that at first, so I think we've I I I'm gonna more talk story than talk to the slides, but uh, I I should introduce, we have, I have Leia Huff uh, who we've engaged as our local community contact, so that while I'm in Australia and we've got other members in New Zealand. Uh, while this process of the permitting is going on, we're, we've engaged uh, Leia to help us uh, do uh, engagements outside the the neighborhood boards, um, which we'll, I'll talk to you later. And we also have the RM uh, who is supporting us in Hawaii for the permitting process. We are at the ve- very early stages, but we're very keen to engage early. Um, thus the the meetings now. Uh, going back to Hawaiiiki, Hawaiiiki is the mythological home through all the Polynesian cultures uh, in the Pacific and the Hawaiiiki cable uh, came out of New Caledonia as a dream to build a bridge between all the uh, the Pacific Polynesian islands. Uh, it actually came to fruition by connecting Australia and New Zealand to Hawaii in the US uh, as a trunk. And we've since been developing the connectivity to uh, those Pacific islands. Uh, which I think we've seen events in the last couple of years, the criticality of having uh, good uh, and redundant uh, cable infrastructure across the seas to the Pacific Islands. So that is where Hawaiiiki's um, ethos and their our our raising detriment is to uh, to build the the, I'll read the words, affordable faster, uh, higher capacity broadband uh, across the Pacific. And out of that Hawaii uh, has become uh, a quite critical hub to us uh, and also uh, well, if we go to the next slide, I'll show you what Hawaiiiki actually is. So Hawaiiiki is actually a submarine cable was the the first instance of of what we've done. And as I've said, uh, the white line uh, from Sydney and Auckland uh, up collecting American Samoa on the way. Uh, then landed into Hawaii and then from Hawaii up to Oregon. Um, two things justified the build rather than the initial, our founders' original and initial aim of connecting all the islands. Uh, was the demand for uh, Hawaii to have better connectivity to the mainland US. And then for Australia and New Zealand to have uh, additional connectivity to the US and also uh, the US to to those areas. Over the time since we went live in two thousand and eighteen, uh, where as I said, we had those five landing spots, we now provide connectivity also to Samoa, Nua, Cook Island, uh, and Tahiti. And I'm very happy to say next year, we will be bringing the second uh, submarine cable into Tonga, who suffered a lot of impacts over the uh, the last couple of years, both on their um, international and domestic cables. Uh, what else have we got up there? I think we've, this presentation's been provided to the board and I expect will be, will be uh, put up um, on a website so that the the public can can read through, so I think I'll I'll skip through to the next slide. Uh, to talk about, so specifically in Hawaii, uh, we purpose-built a cable landing station. Uh, in Kapole, it's actually up on the the northwestern border of this board's um, zone, I guess, uh, area of coverage. We're in between the Waumanalo Gulch and the Hiko Power Plant. Um, and for those who saw when we were building, they they may uh, have been quite surprised in the the manner that the land was excavated, some foundations were being built for for a month or more. And then in two days, the building uh, appeared. Uh, that was due to um, the permitting uh, requirements and the 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 timing. Uh, we had to deliver the the contract. The building was actually uh, a modular solution provided from the mainland US. Uh, all the other um, construction activities and support came from uh, from Oahu. Uh, and actually some some from the other islands is uh, I heard the term and I'd forgotten, the spirit of aloha actually. Uh, the the local contractors brought people from all other islands to allow us to meet the target because there were critical um, contracts, customers in Hawaii who needed that connectivity. Um, I've gone off track. I'm very good at doing that when I talk story. Uh, I'll try to come back. So uh, the building that we've built is uh, where the cable lands and where the local telecoms can interconnect. So there's repetition of the word carrier neutral and it's also uh, comes through in the uh, State of Wires B five-year action plan. Carrier neutrality uh, is important because it develops the competition. So in Hawaii, there are, I think I've got summary here, eighteen eighteen cable landing stations. It's a CLS. Uh, both international and domestic. There is only one that is carrier neutral and that is ours. And what that means is every other cable landing station is either owned and run by Hawaiian Tel, Spectrum, Century Link, or I've forgotten one. Anyway, I'm sure you know what I, who who, the the people I'm talking about. They all come into our facility, so i- it gives um, customers the opportunity to choose which uh, contractor, uh, which telco they want to use uh, to get onto to our system. Um, and that, there's lots of words there about can, the fairness and the competition. Um, you know, once we came in, we had a significant impact on the cost of uh, broadband in Hawaii. Uh, I did ask the the business to for some sort of numbers on it. It was roughly thirty percent when we went live. Uh, reduction in that capacity cost. I don't know that that went to the community members themselves. That was the reduction in cost to the 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 telco operators. Uh, but we do know that since we've been live, um, the cost has uh, has dropped something like ninety percent. So that's, I'm not claiming that's all Hawaii. It is the development of the industry and the more cables that have have gone in, which leads to what we're we're looking at now. Um, I will, there's a few things I've missed on here, so as far as the the cable landing station itself, while it's owned by Hawaiiiki, uh, it's run by um, a Hawaiian-owned company, DR Fortress, uh, who are based actually not far from here in the airport. They're in the data center facility, uh, so they provide staff to us. And then the the facility itself, um, where a cable landing station is critical at redundancy. So we've got uh, dual uh, generators on site. Uh, everything duplicated, the air conditioning systems, uh, and then we've got fire systems, security systems. All of that is maintained uh, by local Hawaiian uh, resources. Um, to the the design capacity, so since we we were built, um, I think uh, the the simplest way to describe is the pipe, the 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 cable that runs across the bottom of the ocean, imagine as a pipe. Just a a pipe getting pumping water through. Uh, over time, bigger techno, better technology's been developed in the pumps. And we can pump more capacity through. So the uh, the initial capacity we had has grown. Uh, but in the meantime, we've actually sold fifty percent capacity. So in six years, that's quite unusual in the cable industry. I'm thirty years in the cable industry and the growth in um, broadband technology and uh, just the the capacity requirements is is huge. So we're fifty percent full, even though we've expanded the capacity we have in those six years. Um, so all around the world, everyone's looking at what they do for more. And also, uh, as far as the Hawaiian government, uh, the, again, the B five year plan is looking for support and looking for development of the ability for more cables to land. Um, let's skip to the next one, please, Leia. Uh, more on that, I might have already covered covered this as to uh, critical infrastructure and it's important to Hawaii and and the main US and and everyone to have that, this capacity. I learned the word and now I'm not gonna go up the stats. The Hawaii Connect Kakuwa, it doesn't look like that. Um, so, you know, we're, what we're looking to do is is supporting of that and what we're loo- looking to do is to build on the existing facility we have. I will step back a little bit in that, uh, we were an industry um, challenger, break, s- system breaker. I forgot the actual, the the word that typically used, but with all the telcos laying all the submarine cables across the the world, Hawaiiiki was was one of the early ones to break that and break the industry a little bit. Um,
Could you face this way?
Sorry?
Can you face this way? Face the camera.
Sorry, I'm trying to talk to the crowd here as well. Um, yeah, so so that's uh, what we've built. Um, and we're now looking to expand the uh, the capacity of the facility we've got. So if we could move on to the next one, Leia. And I'll show you what we're actually doing. So the, our cable landing station, uh, there's an arrow at the the bottom is pointing uh, pointing up to the existing facility. We have recently bought uh, twenty-two acres adjacent to to us. Uh, a lot of that is hillside and um, at the top of it, it borders with the um, the Arizona Battery uh, et cetera, but it was one TMK. So the area of land we were interested in is the area down uh, just Malkaroo Farrington Highway, uh, where you can see all the yellow lines coming out of. And that's the area we're looking to uh, basically put further uh, drill pipes offshore to land more cables. So uh, when we, when we were the industry breaker and came in, we were a startup. Uh, we didn't have the money to do what ideally we would have liked, is instead of drilling one pipe offshore to bring one cable in. Uh, we would have liked to have done two or three. Now that we're uh, we're developed, we can see the demand is coming. We actually want to get ahead of the demand, given permitting is something that takes quite a long, a long time to to get through. We're starting the process now to actually have pipes there ready uh, in line with the uh, the re- the requirements of of the B five-year plan, that the the infrastructure is there to be able to land more cables. Uh, so what you see there, uh, HDD, horizontal directionally drilled uh, pool pipes. Uh, so from our land, we will drill out uh, in the order of nine hundred uh, in Imperial uh, twenty-seven hundred feet or thereabouts. Uh, it goes under Farrington Highway, under the historic railway, uh, under the cliffs and the uh, environmentally sensitive, sensitive shoreline and comes out uh, in the the sands offshore in about fifteen to twenty meter sixty, sixty feet water depth. Uh, so the the reason we 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 do that is to avoid impacting that uh, that shoreline and infrastructure. I mean, we, I've been here for on and off for eight years now. Farrington Highway, we would never get approval to trench across Farrington Highway. Farrington Highway, we would never get approval to trench across Farrington Highway in any case. But it is the far better environmental solution and ecological solution to actually have the pipes going offshore. So basically the pipes go down under the cliffs of the seafront, where somewhere of the order of forty to sixty feet below the cliff face, and then we follow under the seabed and pop out. And that then leaves somewhere, when the cable ship comes ashore, we've got a rope already pre-fed through the HDD drill pipe and they haul the cable ashore into the cable landing station. You'll see a little line going down, so from where the six bores start, we will drill on our property. We need to connect, put some conduits in to get back to the existing cable landing station. So nothing will be trenched or impacting the surface of the land, either from our property or across on the the public lands, the Kahii Beach Park area. And then when we hit the seaward end, the pipe will not actually stick out of the seabed. Once, when we complete the drill, the drill head pops out of the seabed. We have a vessel offshore with divers, they cut the drill head off, return that to port and we actually retract the pipe back into the seabed. When the cable ship, with a suitable seal on the end and as I said, the rope going up through the pipe. When the cable ship comes along, they locally jet around where the pipe is for the cable to be installed and then backfill back over it and the cable heads off down down the seabed, it's quite steep off Hawaii. For the actual build, so the site is currently undeveloped and vegetated. It does have, how do I put this? Unauthorized chicken coops and the like spread all over it, made of corrugated iron and chicken wire and the like. We've been engaging since we purchased the land last December with the nearby neighbors who have removed or relocated some of the chickens and we're working with them to get that addressed. The intent is all the haphazard shacks and buildings that have been put on the site will be cleared. We will then need to remove some of the kiabe trees and level some of the ground to bring the drilling equipment into the site to do the bores. And then once the bores are complete, we need to put in a beach manhole for each two or three drills, which I think we've got some detail on the next page. And we will need to put from our existing cable landing station site, temporary access road and a temporary hard stand area for the equipment to sit on. Once that, the installation work is complete, the beach manhole is shown on the top right. So that's something of the order of two meters, six feet by six feet by eighteen feet long. That will all be buried. The only thing that will be visible is what's seen with the little cones around it, but the cones won't be there, is the typical round manhole lid that you may see along the street for sewer or water or the like. At present, I haven't decided whether I'll bury that. The latest standard in the cable industry is you actually even bury that as critical infrastructure. If it's buried, no one can pull the lid off because I can't even find it, so we'll probably do that. The other thing we'll do is once everything's been installed and remembering these beach manholes and bore pipes are being installed for future installations, we will leave the gravelled hard stand and roadway there, but we will allow the grasses and everything to take back over. We won't allow the kiabas to come back, we'll keep them in check. But the intent is the land will go back to its natural state as much as possible. But when we need to bring in a winch and a haul truck and the like for the each cable installation, we shouldn't have to redevelop anything on the site, we can just drive the trucks in, do what we need, drive back out and the grasses will recover again. So that's the intent of the scope of work we've got. And next page, please, Leia.
So, excuse me, aloha. We are running at above allotted time, so if you could kindly wrap up the presentation, that would be greatly appreciated, thank you.
And can do, Chair Paris, I think this is the last important slide for me, just so people understand what directional drilling is and what I'm talking about. So on the landward side, the bit of equipment that's sort of on an angle, that is the drill rig. Behind it, there's a few containers, so they contain the mud system that's used to drive the drill head. So the hydraulic fluid, it's not actually what people think being hydraulic oil or anything like that, it's a naturally occurring mud that is pumped down through the drill string and drives, effectively their gears, but their teeth at the front that cut through the basalt to create the hole. When we took the size, we're talking about the drill hole is about the AB, so we're not talking anything huge. I forgot to grab a cable sample, but the cable that goes into that drill pipe is half the diameter of the ground. For those who are here, I'll put the samples out later. So that pipe is left in the seabed, nothing is visible. But that's the sort of equipment going on site. It is steerable, the technology these days is fantastic. I was involved in a drill in Sydney not that long ago where they literally after four hundred, twelve hundred feet, came up within an inch of the point they were meant to hit. The technology's, in the thirty years I've been, it's a huge development. But anyway, I just wanted to put that slide up so people understand what HDD is and what these six lines are that we're putting in the ground. If you're running low on time, that's the summary, but I think happy to go to questions if that works for your chair.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions, concerns or comments from fellow board members?
Seeing that at this time, are there any questions, comments or concerns from the public at large? I do recognize two board members right now, let's take them first, Board Member Mikiela Lindstone and Matthew Khan.
Mahalo, Chair Paris. I'm trying to take in this presentation. For me, it's uncomfortable to see the penetration of Kanaloa with this, for this, for the vision of internet for all. Is there an EIS for this project?
There will, there will be, it's in process. As I said, this is the early engagement, just to understand concerns. We did the same thing last six years ago and we learnt some things that we then addressed through the project before we got too far down the track. But yes, there'll be, there's environmental impact assessment, there's cultural and heritage reporting being done as well. With, this week, we've engaged with Army Corps of Engineers. All the permitting requirements will be followed and we're just in the beginning process and that's where we've hired ERM as the local American and on-islands support.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you for the question, Board Member Lindstone, let's go to Board Member Matthew Khan.
Hi, I'll be quick, I think Board Member Mikiela answered my question, I was really trying to figure out what the cabling was for, I must have missed that in the beginning of the presentation because, I mean, he went on with the boring system and, you know, having to get to that cable landing station, so I was really trying to figure out what the cabling was for. I don't know if it was for electricity, but you're connecting from, you know, all these different islands in the Pacific and you're connecting to the mainland. So is this all really just for internet capability?
Yeah, so ninety-seven percent of all telecommunications, whether it's phone calls, whether it's you on your mobile phone to overseas, whether it's Skype, whether it's these sort of Zoom calls, that all happens by fiber optic submarine telecommunications cable. Most of, the majority of people think it's satellite. Satellite became history back in the early nineties, late eighties. It is coming back, everyone knows Elon Musk and Starlink is coming back, but it is a very small percentage because the capacity and the speeds that can be obtained just don't compare and the costs aren't equivalent. And also the reliability are issues, but yeah, sorry, I wasn't clear, this is for telecommunications facilities.
Okay, learned something new today. But thank you, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Any other board members have questions or concerns? Board Member Lindstone has recorded it.
I just want to follow up. I just feel uncomfortable with this project, I don't know if the community knows about this. I'm sure that there will be discomfort amongst some for this, but perhaps I need to learn more. But I'd just like to note that, mahalo.
And I'll repeat the comment, we're not only using the boards as our community engagement, we are with Leia and there is other people going to be reaching out to the community in the same way, you know, I think last time around, we had of the order of thirty different interactions with different leaders and parties throughout the West Coast and we intend to do the same here. We want people to know what we're doing, why we're here. There is a very interesting Instagram page about our building and what it's doing that we don't want known. Oh, sorry, not known, we don't want people having misconceptions. We are telecommunications and we're critical infrastructure. We're not something bad, which this internet site that I was showing says.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments or concern from the community at large? Chair recognizes Community Member Karen Polk.
Chair, thank you, forgive me, I don't have my camera on this evening, but I do have a question. You mentioned earlier that there was a decrease in the cost due to this cable going in and that it will lower the cost, but you said, followed that with, you don't know if it would be passed on to the consumer. Is there anything in this early stage to address that? I'm curious about that. And just for reference, I'm speaking on behalf of the Kapalei Chamber of Commerce, I'm the executive director and CEO.
So we, as a provider, deliver, we wholesale to the customers, so those customers being the telecommunications companies here. We have no control on what they charge for internet, but what we and other cables coming into Hawaii do is create the competition and the price, the need for them to be price competitive. But in us providing a service, we cannot then tell them what they charge, but we do know over the history of since us come into Hawaii, the price has significantly gone down in what they are paying and we assume goes on to what the end users provide. It's what we've seen in Australia, is we, I think for ten years now, I've been paying the same price for my internet, but the capacity and the speeds I'm getting now are a quantum leap from what I was getting before. So people may not see that the price has gone down, but what we were doing ten years ago was emails and text message type things, now we're Zooming and we're watching Netflix in three different rooms in the house. So I do believe the, well, I know the costs have gone down in Australia to the effect I'm talking, and I expect the same to happen in Hawaii, but I've looked into Hawaiians to address that, but it's not something we as the wholesale providers can influence apart from the competitive pricing we do with other cables.
Thank you.
Mahalo, any other questions, comments or concerns? Chair recognizes Community Member Patrick Watson.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions, so saying that this project is approved and moves forward, what kind of impacts do you foresee happening to the community? Because that area is very sensitive to traffic and I just would like to know a little bit more about what you folks anticipate being those types of impacts. I'm very familiar with directional drilling, I work with Kalusho Construction downtown and they're kind of one of the leaders on the island for that type of work. So I'd like to hear your feedback on that and as well as the impacts out toward the coast, because I'm also a surfer, I go out to that place all the time, electric, I'm very familiar with the coastline. There's a hay out right there, there's a lot of cultural kind of sensitivity on the coast there too, so please, if you can, expound on those two elements, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your question, I was fully expecting this one and while I don't live here, I'm frequently back here. I went through the eighteen months of our build program and very, very familiar with the traffic on Farrington Highway and minimizing the impacts there. So we will have for all the construction activities, construction management plans as part of our approvals. And we're already, well, the things we already know is there's certain periods of time, we don't want to have trucks and vehicles trying to come up Farrington Highway, so we will time the delivery of equipment and traffic, sorry, around the peak traffic times to avoid them. Because it's both in our interests as well as the traffic going all the way up the West Coast. Something we did see last time around was the heavy vehicle traffic, the primary was tractor trailers. They cannot be trying to do U-turns at either Kahii Beach Park or at the Hiko Power Plant. Part of the traffic management requirements will be that they go up, further up the coast to, I'm going to call it the McDonald's truck turnaround area at Nanakuli, but that is already part of, you know, the engagement. And for the smaller vehicles also, that everyone is, goes through a traffic understanding protocol that, you know, how they can safely traverse and turn back to Honolulu along the roadway. The other thing we are looking at is, we're talking to our neighbor who we leased land from when we initially built on procuring or leasing part of their land again, so that we can ensure any vehicles re-entering back onto Farrington Highway will only come into the right-hand lane and that none of our activities this time around will involve a closure for any period of Farrington Highway. When we built the building and the modules came in for sort of five minutes at a time, we had to close Farrington Highway and we had off-duty police support the activity. If we have any need for traffic management of significant nature, so when we're mobilizing the drill rig to site and things like that, we will look to do the same thing. And for just day-to-day operations, we're expecting sort of one or two trucks, not tractor-trailer type trucks coming to site. We will have traffic management on-site for that as well, long and short. Then the impact to the surf, so the, and surfers, and also more, on top of that, it is very tourist-oriented. I've done the yacht sailing out there and swimming with the dolphins and everything. So when we put these six pipes in, none of them will be visible. There will be, when each of them daylights, when it comes out of the seabed, it will be one to two days impact at that site and then everything will be gone. And then when the cable ship comes in, as was seen six years ago, the cable ship's there for a day or two and then it lays the cable. The only thing that will be visible to divers or the like in, from twenty meters water depth out will be the cable, which I'm going to quickly grab the sample so people can get an idea. So I don't know how visible that is.
Yep, I can see that.
Less than two inch diameter, so the environmental laws in Hawaii do not allow us to bury the cable. So we will follow sand channels rather than going over coral wherever possible. And in sand channels, it typically self-buries. There's a bit of weight to it, so over time, turbulent seabed, it self-buries, but we are not allowed to proactively bury once it comes out of the drill pipe. So there'll be a black snake running along the seabed, if it stays on the seabed and doesn't self-bury, we've seen that the sea life, you know, part of the environmental policies these days is when a cable life is finished, you have to recover it. What we're seeing is when we recover it, the sea life has taken it up as a home. So there's now debate about whether we actually should be removing it. Um, hay out, there's a hay out on the top of the hill, well behind our site, we'll have no impact on it. And we also know that there is a pre, pre-contact fishing, um, fisherman shrine. Uh, down on the Makai side of the historic railway, again, we will have no impact on it, and that's, that's part of why the directional drilling. Is done because it doesn't impact anything except the entry point on our land, where there's not, no cultural heritage we're aware of, but. This sort of engagement, uh, looks for anyone else to advise if there's something else, so if those are not the two things, um. That you're referring to, I'd like to know what they are, because we want to ensure we don't impact anything.
Enough. Mahalo, thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo, thank you very much, um, for the questions, comments and concerns, appreciate the presentation. And, um, we are limited on the time, so what I would like to do is definitely invite you back to continue the conversation at the neighborhood board. Um, things you should consider doing, uh, in your next presentation or talk story. Is one, it will be really helpful if you provide us with lessons learned from your previous build. Um, so what did you encounter, what are the positive and negative things that you want to address? Like, can you make a clear cultural impetus connection on this project because of the name Hawaiki? And then in the presentation, it doesn't actually speak to the sensitivity of the Pacifica cultures in, in, in the engagement of Ina in specific. So it'd be super helpful to see what you've already done in other areas, what you've done in the last bill, um, just so that we know what, what it is. The traffic management plan, um, revegetation plan for the area, especially taking down the corrugated and the, the chicken coops and the. Um, and the impact to the Ina, um, including the nearshore area seabed and the reef. Um, you, you mentioned some of it, so whatever the plans or the, the graphics for that, I think it would be super helpful to put into a next, um. Visual, uh, and presentation for, uh, the neighborhood board and all of those that are enjoying this on Ola Lo. Um, and if there's anything helpful on, as you could provide on third-party studies. Or reviews on the cable impacts on to the environment to alleviate concerns that our community members might have, but like. Because we might be envisioning damage that just doesn't happen, right, with cables, like, so that would be super helpful if you provided that. And lastly, any like, um, benefit that you see that this is doing to the Pacifica communities, like. Is this owned and operated by certain community members? Are you giving that to the communities in Tonga, Tahiti, Naukou, or because of this? What is the positive impacts that your infrastructure is doing in the community? So basically telling your story beyond just the technical parts with the. Um, drilling and the cabling, I think it would be super helpful, um, for, um, to alleviate some of the community concerns in the next presentation.
Thank you for your commentary and we'll, we'll address them in the, the next visit, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, appreciate you being here with us, okay? Uh, we are at nine thirty, I'm now going to the, uh, community concerns section, uh, Chair recognizes Dr. Kiyomi Dudley, right ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm really concerned that, uh, month after month after month, we don't hear from the people from the federal and state. Uh, and I'm, I'm afraid that we're going to have them less and less coming to our meetings. I would like to move that we take that, uh, section of their reports and move it up to the. Um, we'll put it first right now, so that we could get them to be able to speak tonight. We only have a half hour.
Okay, so there's a request to, um, move, uh, our agenda items, uh, out of order. Um, at this time, the Chair does not want to grant the request, um, if there is a desire to move forward, that will entertain a motion and the. Uh, by majority to reorder, if you so wish. But the Chair's intention is to get through community concerns and get to the action items that we've had on the agenda for the past. Um, two months and also recognize that this was the new schedule that the board voted on, um. A few months ago, so.
I move that we rearrange the schedule so as to have the federal and state people speak first. Is there anybody who second set?
There's been a motion to take the agenda out of order. It's been moved by Dr. Dudley to move, is there a second? Calling second twice, calling second three times, hearing no second, the motion falls at this time. Okay, so we continue with the current agenda and, uh, community concerns. Um, so at this time, I'd like to invite Grace Pacific to, um, provide their community concerns as they have made, made note of their requests, um, prior to the start of.
Hey, thank you very much, Chair Paris. Uh, my name is Scott Komatsu and I'm with Grace Pacific. Um, we're here today to comply with our CUP requirement, uh, to notify the neighborhood board. Of our CUP amendments, uh, we also sent out, uh. Mailers to the adjacent properties, I think it was on October sixth. And, um, so I'll try, I'll try my best to keep this short, uh, this is our, pardon? Oh. Oh. Um, the, uh, this is our fourth presentation, uh, to the neighborhood boards on, uh. The topic of our amendments to our sub-encup. Um, the previous three was on August twenty-fourth, twenty-two. Uh, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two and February twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, as a quick review, um, we proposed four amendments to our sub-cup. Um, we asked to extend the permit for additional fifteen years. We asked for our asphalt and concrete operations to be unrestricted, that would allow us to potentially work at night. To accommodate state, city, federal projects, uh, who would be project-based. We propose, uh, if Julie can change the slide, to reshape the quarry. Essentially the mining areas, uh, so we'll be changing the. I want to call that purple area and turn, turn that mining area into a buffer zone. And the orange area would be the new, um, mining area that we're going for. Uh, this will help us, um, potentially get a higher, higher volume of, of better eight-grade products. And then finally, we want to confirm the permit for a ready-mix concrete plant in the quarry. Uh, as an update, our SUP was adopted by the, and approved by the LUC on September ninth, twenty-twenty-four. And we are currently in the CUP amendment process, uh, for the same four amendments. Uh, and that's all we had for today, um, if there's any questions, uh, we'll, we'll gladly entertain them.
Mahalo, thank you very much for the, uh, update, um, appreciate it. Uh, are there any questions, comments or concerns from, uh, board members or the community at large? As this was, uh, was, this was done during the public comment section, so. We can ask questions, raise concerns, but we cannot take action as board members. Any questions, comments or concerns? Um, the only thing that, um, that raises to mind at this time is, um, following up on the commitment that Grace Pacific made, um, with, um. Dr. Kiyomi Dudley representing, uh, the. The board at the Land Use Commission about engaging with us through our permitted interaction group to talk story about. End-of-life, um, issues with the quarry, so, um. Wanted to confirm that that is still your inclination, uh, to engage with us, and if we can get a timetable, that would be super helpful.
Um, yeah, essentially, um, that, that's not a problem at all, um, right now, as far as a timetable. Uh, pending the fifteen-year extension, uh, we would be getting the, changing it from twenty-thirty-two to twenty-forty-seven. So normally, uh, you know, a few years before that, when we're working on our, uh, final grading plan and so forth. Uh, would probably be where we probably engage with the community, community.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is that you're, you're not wanting to engage with us. In our permitted interaction group and the timetable that we outlined in the resolution that we passed. That was represented to the Land Use Commission, that I recall, Land Use Commissioner Mel Kehle asking Grace Pacific. Whether or not they would entertain the timetable with us, which was to engage by the end of this year. Um, because, uh, that would have, I think, a bearing on whether or not the neighborhood board will, uh, continue to support their project or not. Um, so that will be super helpful, because as far as we've been reported from Dr. Kiyomi Dudley, our permitted interaction group lead. Um, there has been no outreach from Grace Pacific regarding trying to address the concerns and end-of-life of the project if fifteen years are extended, are granted.
Yeah, uh, that's not a problem, sorry for misunderstanding the timeline as far as when you guys wanted to.
Okay, so we're, we're good, we're going to try talk-storing by January to see for the planning, okay? With coordinating with, um, the permitted interaction group lead, Dr. Kiyomi Dudley and myself, that'll be super helpful, okay?
Yeah.
Great, um. I see hands up from the community members, um. Patrick Watson, Erwin, or Dee Weideman, any of you wishing to ask questions regarding Grace Pacific at this time? Or raise comments or concerns of what was reported?
Hi, Chair, uh, yes, Patrick Watson here, I just wanted to, uh, bring your attention to the chat, there's some, uh, residents that are talking about some vibrations and shaking. Occurring from the quarry, and I was just wondering if that was something that could be addressed.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, uh, and, and I think I talked about it a little bit previously. Um, we do have, um, well, one, we did a study, uh, for this, uh, fifteen-year extension. Uh, showing that the new area where we want, uh, uh. Change to the orange area that I talked about earlier, um, will have, uh, no impact to the, uh, to the residents. Uh, and also on top of that, you know, for, for many, many years now, um, we do have, um, vibration monitors, seismic monitor, monitors. Between us and the residents, um, so what we do, we do monthly reports. It constantly takes seismic reading, uh, of our plaques and so forth. And we are way below the, uh, the criteria for, um, I'll give you guys the exact terminology of that, um. The USDM safe vibration criteria, where they feel that they did huge studies on. If it's below this number and we're way below that number, then there shouldn't be any type of structural damage to. You know, even something as soft as drywall, they said.
Mahalo, thank you for addressing the concern that was raised, um, community member Erwin, I see your hand still up, do you have a question, comment or concern, right ahead?
I do, and, and, and we may be past the point, it sounds like, from, uh, an approval process for their, uh, amendments, but I'm just curious about. Uh, there's, there's mention of technical studies, uh, being done, uh, by Grace and Pacific. For this new area, like, who, who are conducting those studies and are those results going to be shared publicly? For us to understand the impacts, uh, to the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yeah, definitely, um, we, um, we submitted it to the different land use commissions and the Department of Permanent Planning. Would the, would the studies be available or? Yeah, it's all public, so it should be public, I, I'm, I'm not familiar where you can look it up, but we, we did go ahead. And share them when we did all our presentations to the different, uh, commissions, yeah, and, uh, so it should be available.
Uh, for, for those of us that are not familiar with where that would be, is there a resource that you could, we, we can be directed to, to allow us to see them?
Yeah. We'll, we'll provide that to the neighborhood board and, um, that we, I guess, um. Uh, Chair Paris, you guys could share that with the community.
Yep, and we'll be happy to take that and put it into the community cloud drive.
Yeah, definitely.
It would be also awesome if you could provide again your contact information for concerns for the quarry, so that community members can directly call Grace Pacific to address their concerns.
Yeah, no, definitely, um, our hotline number is six, seven, um, eight oh eight, six, seven, one, four, seven, two, two.
And then, sorry, just that, and, and that study was conducted by a third party, or was that conducted by Grace Pacific?
Correct, yeah, third, all third parties, yes.
Okay, perfect, okay, now appreciate the insight.
Yeah, thank you.
Mahalo, community, Erwin, for raising the concerns again, okay, seeing all the hands up, uh, regarding Grace Pacific's update. Appreciate, um, you being here, and please do reach out and follow up if there is a need of for. Um, Grace Pacific to be on the agenda, uh, enlisted to meet the regulatory requirements for the future. With that, is there any other community concerns at this time? I recognize community member Dee Weideman.
Thank you very much for having me, um, my apologies, my camera is not functioning, but I'm going to be real quick here. Um, my neighbors, my name is Dee Weideman, I am a Waha Raisings event director. I'm here tonight to announce our twenty-twenty-five event schedule. But first need to let you know that there's been a change to our date for this November since last year's announcement. This year, we're going to be having our November event on the twenty-third rather than the second. Now, what these events are, are five Ks, ten Ks and a half marathons. Over here on the west side next year will be Akahai on January eighteenth. Ho'omau on May tenth, Laulea on July twelfth, and Makoa on November twenty-second. With each being presented in support of a local charity. Hawaii Parkinson's Association, Fur Angel Foundation, Protectors of Paradise and Sheepdog, Sheepdog Impact Assistance, respectively. In each case, our athletes will enter into the district from Eva, where Geiger changes to Roosevelt. Then turn left and head Makai on Coral Sea Road. Util, utilizing shoulders only, so no road closures will be necessary. Additionally, we have fundraising opportunities available for groups who would like to volunteer. We typically see anyone from schools or sports teams to military, but whatever the cause, we'd be happy to have you. Um, I will add my contact information to the chat and by all means invite anyone with questions or concerns to reach out at their convenience. Thank you very much.
Mahalo, at this time, I see no other, uh, members wishing to raise concerns. So let's move to board business. The first business item is the approval of the written summary for video record Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, is there any objection to the written? Summary? Anyone wishing to speak and on this before we go to the objection, I apologize. Anyone wishing to testify on this item, seeing no one raised any objection from board members. Seeing objection, the Chair calls, uh, the approval unanimous. Now moving to, um, resolutions, supporting quality of life and sustainable design elements in multifamily housing developments that respect local values and are place-based. Um, this resolution was, uh, presented and circulated from last month and listing, uh, the items, um. In the resolution, um, that we have been talking about seventeen of them in specific for the last few years. Including edible and native landscaping, community guardian spaces, vertical landscaping, passive cooling techniques, reinforced structures. Community center and disaster hubs, water catchment systems, gray water piping and water reclamation. Microgrid, community solar and micro windmills. Electrical, vehicle-ready stalls, underground parking solution, kupuna, keke daycare. Bicycle, e-bike, moped and motorcycle storage spaces, surfboard and longboard storage areas, onsite temporary storage facilities. Wine names and art and decor. Is. The Chair recommendation is to, uh, adopt, uh, as is, um, entertaining any additions that board members would like after, uh, we move to adopt. Um, can I have a motion to adopt and then we'll take up the subsequent amendments at that time? Chair recognizes Dr. Dudley, you saw your hand. Was that a question or the motion to adopt so that we can move forward with discussion?
Um. I, I, I just don't know what to do, I, I have things that I would like to see changed in, in the resolution. I can't get my crazy machine to, to come up with those things right. I can't get my crazy machine to, to come up with those things right now. I'm wondering if it's possible that we could put this off for one more month, this first resolution? I know, I, I know, but you know, what, what is it going to, what is one more month gonna do? Let me tell you, the things that I want in there is I, I think that we need to be much, much stronger on the hurricane situation. I think every new building, we need to state in there that every new building has to be built to category five. That's, you know, it's just our resolution that doesn't have any real power. But I think that we need to straight, state things extremely strongly so that people get the idea that, you know, we need hurricane protection.
Okay, um, Dr. Dudley's recommendation to put it off because the technical difficulties of the amendments is reasonable. And again, these elements are already well-known in our community, so we can take another month. I don't think that would be an issue for us to push this off to get language. But I do encourage community members and the board members to send the potential language to myself so that we can make the editing process as streamlined as possible. So if there's no objection, we're gonna defer this. Hearing no objection, the resolution is deferred. Next, we have the resolution entitled Standing in Solidarity with Neighborhood Board Number Thirteen in Support of Establishing an Empty Home Tax in Honolulu. The general emphasis is that there is a live empty tax home bill thirty-six that is already before the city council. And the downtown Chinatown board has already taken a position on this to tax homes that are laying vacant during our housing crisis. It aligns with our previous resolutions and it gives us opportunity to weigh in on this critical discussion before the city council. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and it's been seconded and the board member Mikiela Lindstone. At this time, chair calls for anyone wishing to offer public testimony before the board as it contemplates adopting this resolution. Chair does recognize that we have gotten a number of support or testimonies through the neighborhood board commission portal from community members in support of the resolution. There has been no opposition testimonies. Anyone wishing to testify, going once, going twice, going three times? Okay, now to board discussion, any further discussion from board members? And I will recall the resolve clause so that we're clear on what we're voting on is that our board stands in solidarity with Neighborhood Board Number Thirteen in supporting the establishment of an empty homes tax in Honolulu. And that our board supports the concepts contained within Bill forty-six, twenty-twenty-four, and Bill forty-six, conference draft one. And order that it be dispersed to the various parties. Basically, we're standing in solidarity and saying we support this policy direction for empty homes tax and the current drafts as outlined. Any further discussion from board members? Hearing no further discussion, the chair will call the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any appeals, say nay? Any abstentions, say kanalua? Hearing none, the chair calls it unanimous. Congratulations, we have a solidarity resolution. But finally, before us is we have pigs in our last six minutes. The real question comes down with, we have resolutions, they're written out in technical language in concert to withstand the level of scrutiny that we've been shown. I think because our neighborhood board has been quite active and progressive in our stances. So we have them modeled after the city and county of Honolulu's permitted interaction groups. And we have partners in the Eva Neighborhood Board that wishes to help engage with us on regional issues that we outlined and took a position on last board meeting. So all I really need for these resolutions, I would like to take them all unbunk together. And I would like to see who would like to volunteer to sit on them. I am already named to all of them and there are three or four members from Eva Neighborhood Board on them. And all this is doing is allowing us to talk story without having to set up an agenda, without acting to have a committee meeting. We can just talk about these regional issues and concerns with each other and then make a report back to a joint meeting. Any questions on the chair's recommendation? I recommend that we adopt them all unbunk together and with noting who would like to sit on which ones. And the recommendation again from the chair is that there is that Parks and Recreation would consider being on top of the Kalailoa pig and Transportation Committee members, including Uncle Frank and Audio, that's reg and and the fur be on the infrastructure PIG. And we do have the one on education, which I would ask that Dr. Amy Bosler consider being on. And if there's no objection with that list, and then if Matthew Khan or Michael Singleton would volunteer with, and Dr. Dudley volunteer for any of the other ones, that would, that would be great as well. So with the current pigs, we have one for schools, one for community resiliency hubs, which I recommend Dr. Dudley be on because it's disaster preparedness. Transportation safety, so all of the Transportation Committee members. And Kalailoa, Parks and Recreation with Mikiela, and then schools with Dr. Amy Bosler, and then Michael Khan and Michael Singleton, if you would like to be on one, I would encourage you to participate in one of them. Is there any objection from any of the main parties so far to serving in what you usually serve in?
I'll do it.
Okay, so. Okay, so on Michael Singleton and Matthew Khan, would you mind them serving on the schools? And the community resiliency hub respectively? So you can jock in a poll which one you want.
Community resiliency.
Okay, Michael Singleton is community resiliency, and Matthew Khan, would you mind sitting with Amy Bosler and myself on the schools? Cause one, would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay, great. So the PIGs will be established unbunk. Recommendation, as stated, Michael Singleton and Dr. Dudley on community resiliency with myself, Mike, Matthew Khan, Dr. Amy Bosler, and myself on on schools, myself and Mikiela on Kalailoa, and myself and all of the Transportation Committee members on transportation safety. Is there a motion to adopt unbunk as listed?
So.
It's been moved and seconded by Dr. Dudley and Mikiela Lindstone, not sure which went which, but we got two of them. And Mikiela moved, Dr. Dudley second. Okay, any further discussion? Any community member wishing to publicly testify or volunteer to serve on the pig? Any of these pigs? Hearing no discussion, calling testimony once, calling testimony twice, calling testimony three times. That's already done. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, chair asks by a sign of unanimous consent, everyone say aye. We adopt.
Aye.
Aye.
Just checking, any nays, any abstentions? Chair calls unanimous that all the PIGs are set up with the names as identified for the various pigs. And to note that myself and, and Chair John Clark will reach out to all of the members of the pigs to set up the initial face-to-face or virtual gathering to get everybody's manao and then plan out our course of talk story with each other. But also know that you can already talk with any of the people on the list without waiting for myself. It's totally fine, because now we're in permitted interaction group. Okay, with that, I believe we are at the end of our agenda. And I would like. Yes.
I wonder if we could at least mention the people who have come in person and who are on the internet, who are listed here as representatives of the federal and state so that we know that they actually are here and would speak ordinarily.
Absolutely, and begging everyone's lenience, we'll take a couple of minutes to acknowledge everyone from the state and federal agencies or elected officials offices at this time. And if you would like to have any words, I recognize Governor Representative Uncle Gordon Pang, Melanie with Senator Gabbard's office, also Representative Diamond Garcia here with us. Would any one of you like to have a few seconds to share any manao at this time? Seeing none, I appreciate you all being here, recognizing that you guys are here. Uncle Gordon, go ahead. You have the last, the last shout-out.
Email me with any concerns or pass them forward. I do pass forward the resolution, the draft resolution to all the parties I've said I would pass forward.
Okay, appreciate it, okay? And with that, thank you very much, everyone for being here. We have the last announcement is that we are taking a recess next month in November and then we will be reconvening in December at the fourth, at seven PM, a couple of holiday conference rooms AMB and on WebEx. And during this recess, we will be doing permitted interaction group work with the Eva Neighborhood Board members. And board members, feel free to raise your concerns with me. I will do a poll to see whether or not we are able to do a special meeting to go over the new guidance and see how we can better navigate that, if that is your wish. And I'm more than willing to talk with you about solutions individually in the interim as well. Okay, mahalo nui lo, everyone. Thank you so much, and the meeting is adjourned.
Mahalo, everyone.